Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good to see all of you up here in Albany, New York. I'm New York State Senator Robert Jackson, Chair of the Civil Service and Pensions Committee, and I'm joined by our ranking committee member, Senator Alexis Wyke, representing parts of Nassau and Suffolk County of Long Island, and our committee colleague, Senator Ewan Chu of Brooklyn. Well, thank you all for coming. The Senate has convened this hearing in response to the critical issues of retention and recruitment within New York State's civil service and public sector. The state currently faces labor shortages for all levels and industries providing public service, which requires the development and successful implementation strategies that focus on removing barriers, attracting a diverse pool of candidates, and retaining an experienced workforce. The implications of these issues extend far beyond the realm of employment statistics. They have profound consequences for all over well-being and functionality of the state of New York. A shortage of skilled and dedicated workers in the public sector directly affects the delivery of services and essential services to the residents of New York. From education, to healthcare, to public safety, to infrastructure development, many sectors rely on a robust and adequate staff workforce. A thriving labor force is an integral part of our economic growth. A shortage of skilled workers can hamper productivity and innovation. Retention issues can place an undue burden on existing employees, and this can lead to stress, burnout, low employee morale, and a stable workforce is also critical to the state's long-term planning for projects and initiatives that make New York State competitive and attractive to businesses and investments. And today, I look forward with my colleagues and staff to hearing from our partners, you who share the same commitment and concerns that this state's ability to provide essential services, foster growth, and ensure the well-being of its residents and vitality of New York State. Every voice is a valuable voice in this conversation, so we will be accepting written testimony until Friday, October 13th. So if you have not submitted it, please send a PDF version to ecollins@newyorkstatesenate.gov or mail a written copy to 188 State Street, Room 306, to Legislative Office Building, Albany, New York, 12247. And if you wish to be included in the hearing record, that's what's so important. So we want to hear from everyone. So with that, I'll welcome our first panel. And the first panel is Panel One, the Police Benevolent Association of New York State, the Police Conference of New York, the New York State -- is it the right one?
Yeah, I just opened for a ring girl.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, okay. The New York State Correction Officers and Police Benevolent Association, the New York State Professional Firefighters Association, and New York State Public Employees Conference. But before you give your testimony, let me turn it over to our ranker, Alexis Wyke.
Thank you, Senator. Oh, now it's on. Okay. Thank you, Senator. I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to hearing testimony today. I see some of the brightest and the best faces in our state. I know that you provide us with the best service, and I'm looking forward to hearing your testimony on how we can become more effective for the future of our great state. So thank you so much for being here today.
And with that, we move forward on the first panel. So Peter, just introduce yourself and your position, and each one of you, before you begin, just introduce yourselves and the position and who you're representing. Tap it like that. Is it okay?
No, it's not lit. This one might be on. Is this on?
That one's on, Mike. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Jackson, Ranking Minority Chairman Wyke, and Member to the New York State Senate Standing Committee on Civil Service and Pensions. First and foremost, on behalf of the 90 public employee unions that I represent, I wish to thank you for this excellent opportunity to present testimony in helping you move forward on recruitment and retention. For those who don't know me, my name is Peter Meringalo. I am the Chairman of the New York State Public Employee Conference, and I have been in that elected position for more than two decades. I served as President of the New York City Correction Captains Association for 17 years. I am joined by Pete Patterson, who is the New York State Public Employee Conference Legislative Committee Chair on Tier Equity, which coincides right with this panel, and also many of my members will be testifying here as well. For those that may not be aware, PEC is comprised of some 90 member unions and groups of public sector employees. I encourage you to visit our website to see the vast number of members that we have. You will also be able to see our legislative agenda, which highlights tier equity as our number-one priority moving forward in this year. We welcome this opportunity to address the issues before you today, most particularly the pensions and the newer tiers as they relate to recruitment and retention of public employees. My testimony here will be brief for the purpose of time. However, I will identify some examples of the dire need to roll back the requirements of the newer tiers across the agencies. Issues that impact whether an individual seeks public employment and, if so, remains in that capacity. But clearly, the primary focus of new and younger employees is the current state of the pension tiers in New York. The higher contribution rates, the draconian social security offsets in New York City plans, the exclusion of oftentimes mandatory overtime in pension calculations lead a litany of pension erosions. If not corrected soon, these issues will continue to be a detriment to public employees in obtaining and retaining qualified talent. I will only be referring to the 68 pension plans today because my members are not part of the New York City Teachers Plan or the New York City Education Plan. It is well-established that certain job specifications are experienced through fear. Staffing shortages, corrections, police, nursing, EMS are the most egregious examples, but staffing shortages are endemic across the board. As an example, nurses. Nursing shortages are common knowledge. In 2021, it was necessary for New York to enact laws to provide minimum nurse staffing in hospitals and nursing homes, notwithstanding that there are still shortages despite these laws. Suffolk County Correction. There has been an 82% decline in the number of candidates that have taken the Suffolk County Correction Officer test, civil service test. The first test since the implementation of tier changes in New York State. We had 5,272 test takers in 2011. That number decreased to 938 test takers for the most recent test in 2023. In the area of correction captains, New York City, the budgeted headcount for correction captains now stands at approximately 704. The current headcount of approximately 570 captains currently in the rankings nearly 20% below what the budget calls for. Realistically, it is conceivable that it is closer to a shortfall of 30% to 35% availability of captains to work in the jails. If officers cannot be promoted to captain, captain cannot be promoted to assistant deputy wardens, and so on, the pool of candidates for promotion will dwindle significantly. In the courts, here is a startling statistic regarding court officers, which is typically a sought-after position in public employment because of the status and the work schedule. The most recent statewide court office exam attracted 88,109 applicants. However, a stunning number of those, 51,116, did not take the test despite having paid the fee. Another example of there's not any reason to take a job that doesn't give them protection. And the last issue I'll give is Nassau corrections. Few applicants have applied for the correction officer exam in Nassau County that they now went to interviews in lieu of a qualified civil service exam. On that note, I would like to turn it over to my Chairman of the Tier Equity Committee, Pete Patterson.
Got to juggle this around a little bit, huh? I know, listen, thank you very much, Senator, all three right now. I know you personally, I work with you, and I know and respect you, and I know you're going to take all this testimony seriously. That's why we travel up to Albany. So thank you once again. I want to just briefly do a history of how we got to here, and I'm not, a very brief history. Back, and I'll talk like police, but ERS will be similar. Back in '73, they decided to do a new tier called Tier Two. That lasted along with the ERS tiers for decades, not years, decades, several decades, and it went on. In 2009, the state, then governor, decided it's time to take a look at it again. The unions, all the associations here, we disagreed with it. The system was working, don't fix it. They decided, the legislature at the time, they had to address it. We didn't like it, we didn't agree to it, but that being said, we got Tier Five. We licked our wounds, walked away after fighting our battles, and went our way. Then, then interestingly enough, in two years, two budget cycles, two budget cycles, not decades, not 10 years, two years, two budget cycles that were touted by the administration, on-time budgets, well-funded, well-balanced, two budget cycles, once again, the public employees were attacked and said, you know something? Even though we have no evidence that you need to chip in more, we're going to make the chip in more. We have several examples in most of our units that 100% increase in contributions, the overtime limitations. I'll speak on behalf of the police. I'll step out of my hat right now. We're mandated, as well as corrections, as well as probably every other public employee, we're mandated to stay there. We're mandated to stay away from our families. The corrections, I don't know how they do it. They get locked in. They don't even have a say. They can't even make an argument. But they can't leave. They can't leave, and you think about it. And then, we turn around and say to them, thank you for your service, however, it's overtime, so this is not going to go into your pension. And people say, well, it skyrocks and everything. Pension was already addressed with the Kingston cap. Everybody in this room, behind me as well as you, they know what it was. It was addressed to make sure it was fair and equitable to the employees and the municipalities could have a fair and equitable say in it as well. That being said, Tier Six eroded that as well. So now, not only we're facing that, we're facing the pension problem. And the last thing I want to hit on with Tier Six, rather, Tier Three in the city, we represent several, numerous cities, the social security offset. Now, you look at me, I retired two years ago. You look at me, you'd probably say I look like I'm 28, but I did retire several, only a couple of years ago. I wasn't around, nor any of anybody in this room, we weren't around when this social security offset was implemented. How in the world it ever got in there is mind-boggling. You think about it. I would say, you know what? Take a step and think about what you're looking at. I got guys in the city, corrections, cops, firefighters, whoever, they're going to retire. By law, they got to pay into social security, and they're going to get the right benefit that we all should be getting. However, when they get to a certain age, they're going, hold on, New York City, I'll help pay my own pension. I'll take, save you money, and I'll rob from my social security to pay my pension. To me, to me, that's criminal. That really has to be looked at. We are public employees. We make this state great. New York State, I don't care what, I don't care what any media outlet, I love New York State. I'm going to stay here forever. It's great. It's great because of the public employees. And I'll leave it on a final note. We saw this during COVID. Everybody in this room, teachers, first responders, healthcare workers, when the governor, rightfully so, said, stay at home, stay at home, do not get exposed to COVID, we didn't have that right. My members didn't have that right. Corrections didn't have that right. Nurses, doctors, teachers, all public employees didn't have that right. They went out there. And, and I didn't see one sign, I didn't see one article saying, are over generous pension benefits? It's not overly generous. We work for what we are entitled to do, and it keeps getting eroded, and that is inherently wrong. Wrong, excuse me. When we start moving forward with this process, we all got to get together and say, listen, this is not one plus one equals two. This is human beings. These are people that are putting their lives on the line each and every day. And I'm not talking just on law enforcement. Mike will talk to that. I'm talking about everybody. So when we move forward, we got to take that into account. And I know I'm preaching to the choir with the three people I'm looking at, because you guys will, but we got to really inherently make a move towards making the pension benefits more equal and more fairer, not richer, more fairer to the public employees. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I guess I'll turn it over to Michael O'Meara.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting us here. As Pete had said, we know all three of you personally. Chairman Jackson, we commend you for bringing this out into the public view and not just conversations we're having in offices. This is something that is, that we talk about in the police profession every single day, and it's something that needs to be brought to the forefront.
Before you begin your testimony, could you say your name and who you represent?
I will. My name is Michael O'Meara. I'm the President of the Police Conference of New York. The Police Conference of New York is the largest statewide police organization. We represent over 200 police unions and associations with a membership of more than 50,000 members. Thank you again, Chairman Jackson, Senator Wyke, Senator Chu, for inviting us here. Pete touched on a couple of things I was going to talk about, the new pension tiers. Like we said, there was no study. I'm going to really drill in a little bit on the pension tiers being a driving factor in the recruitment and retention of public employees, how that has had a dire effect on it. But as Pete said, there was no study done. We went from Tier Five to Tier Six while the ink was still wet on Tier Five, and we all know it was done for a political soundbite for the then-governor. And, you know, it was done on the backs of public employees, and we took it on the chin. The NYPD, I'll have my comments will directly be related mostly to police. The NYPD, we talk a lot about Tier Five and Tier Six. They have Tier Three, and I guess what they term as Tier Three Enhanced, which it's certainly not enhanced, it's enhanced in favor of turning people away from being police officers. Tier Three Enhanced is particularly damaging. It added to the years of work. It increased, there's no increase after 25 years. So when, when the people that are in Tier Three Enhanced reach 25 years of service, they're going to leave. There's no, no reason to stay in the profession of policing in New York City after 25 years because there's no benefit to it. You max out, that's it. So when those people that have reached supervisor or management or senior investigators reach that 25-year age, they're going to leave, and you're going to have a brain drain, which is something that we don't need in the police profession. Recruitment to the profession of policing has been severely, severely hampered in the last decade. Obviously, the tiers are a big factor, but the haste to enact laws in the aftermath of the killing of George Floyd has not enhanced the police profession but created an opposing dynamic. There's an uptick in crime. There's a feeling of lawlessness and fear in our communities, and it has dramatically reduced the pool of young adults that want to become police officers. So you could see, in the aftermath of tier reform and the wholly unjust, I believe, vilification of the police profession in New York State for what happened in Minneapolis, departments both large and small, city and suburban, rural, everywhere are facing enormous recruitment problems, and in many cases, have had to lower their standards in hiring of police officers to fill these gaps in their recruitment. That is certainly not something we want to do in the police profession. You know, we talk a lot about police and training, and, you know, we're tasked with being, you know, youth counselors and drug counselors and marriage counselors, and we got to be experts in jujitsu and learn how to, you know, shoot properly, and we learn all this in six months, and we want to have the best and the brightest taking this job. And we've had to lower our standards because of the retention issues and recruitment issues in New York State. Retention, we have seen record numbers of officers retiring. You've seen the news reports in recent years. The biggest issue is we see and we believe is a declination in the pension benefits. However, almost universally, all police departments in New York State are operating with fewer personnel as compared to the years before the pension tiers were enacted. In my written testimony, you will see, I'm not going to cite them here, there is a direct relation, it's taken from the DCJS website, with the number of police officers in police departments all over New York State and the number of police officers after the tiers were enacted. The NYPD, again, will be further affected because they have an additional problem, not only Tier Five and Tier Six, they have an anomaly in Tier Two that forces police officers hired since the year 2000 to take their one-year final average, one year is their last 12 months is their final average salary instead of an average of their three years. If they do budget cuts in New York City, that will decimate the NYPD. You will have huge amounts of supervisors, detectives, captains, lieutenants, sergeants retiring from the job immediately because they can't stay. It would harm them forever in the future. With that being said, the pension funds in New York State are solvent. They're well-managed. They're funded at higher levels than almost every single state in the nation. We have a great pension system. Our controller does a fantastic job as the guardian of the pension plan. It's a great pension plan, well-funded. So what we're asking for is some, a little bit, the overtime, as Pete had said, we're forcing these officers to work overtime. It's mandated. We don't have enough people, so we're mandating overtime, and then these young officers are turning around and coming to us as union officials and asking us, why am I doing this? Because it doesn't count towards my pension. So I'm working all this overtime, but I'm never going to see it in the future. So just want to finish up saying, you know, in the police profession, we have been, over the past few years, we've seen a downturn in recruitment and retention, primarily because of the pension tiers, but also because of some of the laws that have been passed recently and the media demoralization of the police profession. I want to be very careful and ask you to look around at other states, too. Keith Olson, the President of the Yonkers PBA, is very, very into his job, and he sent me a few articles recently. One of the articles was, in California, they're offering in certain communities $75,000 bonus to become a police officer because they can't get anybody to take the job. Not 7,500, $75,000 to come there and become a police officer. We see this all over New York State. We have job fairs where people from Florida and from down south and from out west come to New York State, and they try to get our police to leave and go take their jobs, and they're offering them bonuses and moving allowances. We don't want to get there. We don't want to get there in New York State. You know, the police profession is an essential, honorable profession. We don't want the communities to feel lawlessness and fear, and we need to do something to enhance these tiers, to attract young adults to the profession of policing, because we've obviously, obviously seen this downturn in recruitment and retention in recent years. And again, I thank you for the time and the invitation to speak here and for your bringing this to the forefront. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in and giving testimony on behalf of all of the members that you represent.
Thank you.
And next?
Making sure this is on. Good morning. My name is Kurt Nolan. I'm the Executive Director and Counsel for the PBA of New York State. We are the exclusive bargaining unit for university police, park police, environmental conservation police, and forest rangers. We have approximately 1,150 members, and our members protect our SUNY campuses, historic parks, recreation sites, forests, and our natural resources. I'd like to begin by thanking you for this opportunity to speak to you about issues that are important to our members and public safety. I'd also like to mention that I was a member of the New York State University Police for about 12 years, where I served at the University of Albany and SUNY Geneseo, so I can speak to these issues directly because I've lived them. Our career ladder is non-existent in many of our agencies. Civil service is very important, but what happens is because our four agencies are non-traditional police agencies, they don't have a career ladder that's necessary to support the modern police departments and the demands of running them. There's not enough civil service positions to adequately distribute the patrol, supervisory, investigative, and administrative tasks of a modern police department. So what this forces our agencies to do is create in-house titles. They make up positions. These are not civil service positions. They're not real titles. These positions are often directly negotiated with members, which pits our members against each other. Our members receive no additional pay, compensation, or authority for these, and it forces the union to file out-of-title work grievances and battle to make sure that our members actually get paid for the work that they're doing. The other really important thing to mention about this is our agencies do this because they have no other choice. We have to run police departments, but we don't have the positions necessary to do so, so our agencies are pitted between civil service and creating these fake positions to get the job done. And then what happens is, once they have people in these fake positions, there's no incentive for them to actively petition civil service to create real ones. As an example, the university police, where I come from, we only have four titles. We have police officers, lieutenants, investigators, and senior investigators. There's nobody above those ranks. So essentially, everybody who wants to get promoted within the university policing system, we have to give up civil service protection. When I became a member of command staff, I got rid of civil service protection. And as they're mentioning, we have issues with pension in general, but our members have a 25-year pension. So what happens is, you have to make a decision 10, 15 years on the job. Do you want to risk your entire career to become a member of command staff by waiving civil service protection and become a member of Management Confidential, where you serve at the pleasure of an unelected bureaucrat? So if you have 15 years in the pension system and a college president decides they don't like the job you're doing without cause, they can terminate you, and you no longer have a pension. And it's extremely difficult in policing, as you know, to transfer to another agency, especially once you're over 35 years of age. The park police specifically, since they've been taken over by the New York State Police for approximately 50 years, the park police had an in-house title of detective. Members of the road patrol would be assigned to the detective unit, and they would perform all the functions that any other detective would do in any other law enforcement agency. But since the state police have taken over, they've been stripped of their title, they've been put back out onto the road, and all investigative duties are transferred to the New York State Police BCI. And again, because this is not a civil service position, it's a made-up title, they have no recourse whatsoever. These Management Confidential positions circumvent the rule of three. Essentially, what I see happen on a lot of SUNY campuses, they predetermine the candidate that they want to hire, they create a list of qualifications that only one person can satisfy, and then what ends up happening is, they put it out, they post it, no one applies, one person applies, and they say, sorry, we have to hire this one person. But it's specifically constructed to get the one and only candidate they want, and that defeats the entire purpose of civil service in our policing departments. This is also an extremely concerning issue for diversity, equity, and inclusion. One of the most important things that I'm advocating for is additional civil service titles within our policing agencies because civil service requires that everybody is paid equally. In Management Confidential positions, your salary is negotiated on a one-to-one basis. So if they want to provide, you know, less salary to somebody who's a woman or a minority, they can do so, and there's no recourse whatsoever because your salary is negotiated individually. That's why it's so important for us to create additional civil service titles in order to guarantee people pay equity. One of the things that I have seen in my career is there's just never enough civil service exams. If you are somebody, one of the few remaining people who want to become a police officer, if you look at the exam and you just missed it, let's say you're just getting out of college, you just got those 60 credits required to qualify, the next exam might be in three or four years. So if you decided, I want to be a state trooper, or I want to be a university police officer, you just missed the boat. And because of our civil service system, you have to wait years to get the job that you want, and people have to get a job. They move on to other agencies, they move on to other states. We need to actively call on civil service to have more exams and have them at a frequent and regular interval. For example, what we're having occur in the New York State Park Police right now, they're down to approximately 200 sworn members. And obviously, everybody knows the park police have been in the news, our parks are important, we need to protect them, but I believe at their peak, they were around 300 members. They're now down to 200. Essentially, we had 60 people offered a position in the academy for the New York State Park Police. It's one of the first ones they've had since 2019. Only 32 people decided to attend. one of the first ones they've had since 2019. Only 32 people decided to attend the academy, and we've already lost 10. And I believe that right now, there isn't even a civil service exam for park police. They're processing people who have not even taken the exam, hoping that civil service will hold one, and that they have a pool of candidates interested, ready to go to take the test. There's also a serious lack of promotional exams, especially within our agencies. We already don't have a career ladder. And then if you're an officer who wants to stay within parks, to stay within SUNY and Connor Forest Rangers, if you want to build a career, you can't, because they're not offering civil service exams. And that leads to the next issue. Back in 2020, the inspector general published a report that our forest rangers were critically undersupervised. And what we have happening now, because the civil service exams haven't been held, I believe, since 2019, and the current list has been expired, the forest rangers aren't even promoting people provisionally, which is actually something you can do under civil service. They're just sending someone an email and saying, congratulations, Officer Nolan, you're now a lieutenant. You have all the duties and responsibilities of a lieutenant, but you don't have any of the pay, you have none of the authority. And by the way, when you go to apply for a command position, none of this time counts as supervisory experience. And I'm sure that you can understand the concerns with that is, there are no canvases, there's no civil service exams, there's no minimum qualifications, and basically, it's creating a system of patronage that civil service was designed specifically to prevent. You know, my colleagues have gone on at length about the pay and benefits, but I'll say, as a police officer, I was never incentivized to become a cop for the money. I don't think any of us were. But our members have a unique difficulty in that we are paid significantly less than surrounding law enforcement agencies, drastically less than the New York State Police. So when we finally do get candidates to join one of our four agencies, we have, I think, six people in the academy at one of our agencies now. Three are already spoken for. They're going to be leaving as soon as they graduate. This is a common occurrence in our four agencies. We don't have competitive pay. And while everybody else is upset about their 20-year retirements, my members have a 25-year retirement. And on that note, I would like to thank the Senate for their support of our 20-year retirement bill. In conclusion, you know, the civil service system plays a critical role in public employment and public safety in the state of New York. We strongly encourage the Department of Civil Service to review these issues and work with the union, which is often left out of the conversation when it comes to these issues. And again, we would like to thank you for your support of the retirement bill for our members.
Well, thank you for your time in coming in representing as the executive director and counsel for the Police Benevolence Association of New York State.
Thank you.
Next?
Hi. I'm Sam Frasina, president of New York State Professional Firefighters. We're an association that represents 109 locals from New York City to Buffalo and various cities, villages, towns across the state. I want to join my colleagues here in thanking you and Senator Wyke and Senator Chu for taking the time to listen to our concerns this morning and this afternoon. As president of the state association, the recruitment and retention issue is critical to all firefighters across the state, and it is our top priority for every legislative session until we're able to get some relief for this crucial issue. Throughout the year, I travel the entire state, meeting with all our membership to ensure that their needs are being addressed, so they can adequately perform their jobs as firefighters protecting their local communities. There's nothing, to me, that's more important than the health and safety of our membership. One of the critical components of this is that municipalities provide adequate staffing levels on each apparatus for firefighters to safely and effectively carry out their duties. There are communities throughout the state that are now at a breaking point in filling empty firefighter positions, including right across the river in Troy. They're not able to fill empty positions, and this is becoming a bigger and bigger problem. Across the state, we're seeing a steep drop-off in the number of applicants for professional firefighters, which is having a larger and more dangerous impact in the smaller cities and communities that we serve. In last year's executive budget, Governor Hochul outlined a plan to stabilize statewide fire service to improve emergency response. Unfortunately, this plan only focused on one aspect of fire service, the volunteers. It did not include any plan of reference to bolster and improve the paid professional firefighter ranks in the state. We would support a holistic support approach to statewide fire service plan, and I would personally be happy to work alongside the governor, State Office of Fire Protection and Control, and the legislature to address these shortages in New York State. This issue has a negative impact on volunteers across our state. Many of our professional departments across the state are there to go in and provide backup and assistance to the volunteers in just about every part of the state. So it not only protects us, but it protects everyone, or affects, rather, everyone. As I previously mentioned, safety is our top priority. Following a four-year enlistment in the military, I came back several decades ago to serve as a professional firefighter for more than 20 years in the city of Albany. This was a calling for me. I knew when I took the job, as I do now, the dangers and risks associated with becoming a professional firefighter. It's a reality that in this profession, even the most well-trained, physically fit, and circumstantially aware firefighters can be severely injured, suffer a line-of-duty death, or succumb to other diseases or health impairments, such as cancer, stemming from an exposure to toxins during a fire situation. Just yesterday, I participated in the annual fallen firefighters memorial at the Empire State Plaza to honor 29 firefighters who gave their lives in the line of duty. Since being created, the New York State Firefighters Memorial has stood as a solemn tribute to those who give their lives in the line of duty to their communities. As of this year, there are 2,660 names on that wall. I pray at this time, when we gather, to remember in the future that no new families are mourning a line-of-duty loss. For many of my brothers and sister firefighters, we assume the risks and dangers of firefighting, knowing that our retirement and healthcare benefits would be there for us, for our families, once we finally exit the firehouse. Plainly put, I spent a lot of years in the fire service. I knew when I signed the book that I was shortening my lifespan. Many, there have been many studies that prove this fact. I accepted it. I also accepted the fact that if the time ever came where I had to sacrifice my life, just like our brother and sister, brothers and sisters in law enforcement, I was ready to do that in the line of duty. I also knew that it would have an impact on my family, but the way Tier Six gutted these benefits, our members are now asked to sacrifice their families. And that is not right. That is not fair. That is what is driving many, many people away from these noble jobs. Unfortunately, like I mentioned, firefighter retirement benefits that I earned no longer exist. Tier Six has completely gutted the opportunities for our members to provide a decent pension and a security blanket for them and their families. The dangers, as our benefits have decreased, the dangers and risks have only increased. We're facing new construction materials and fabrics, many of which release toxins and carcinogens into the air when they combust. Most recently, we see motorized scooters and electric bikes powered by lithium-ion batteries. I need to, we all know what that happens, especially in New York City, where we've had several incidents where we've lost lives. These are fires that are more dangerous than ever before. They burn quicker. They require a faster response. They require a better response, and they result in more injuries and more deaths, not only to the public, but to the members who are responding to these emergencies. The time that we have is shortened. The time for residents to escape these buildings is shortened. According to the Fire Safety Research Institute, the number of fires being reported have slightly decreased, but fire deaths have increased by 30% over the past decade. We're not in an ordinary job. During a 24-hour shift, we can respond to events ranging from multi-story blazes, where chemicals fill the air that we breathe, to accidents and medical emergencies, where high-pressure decision-making is the norm. We have portable emergency rooms on the street now. We, our paramedics carry a multitude of lifesaving drugs. 2:00 in the morning, they're on the scene with someone who is teetering on death. Our members make life and death situations at a second's notice, and you don't get a do-over. The decisions that you make will have a very large impact in whether or not these residents are going to live or die. In short, again, our job has become more deadly and difficult while our retirement benefits have just been gutted. The negative consequences of Tiers Five and Six cannot be overstated. While professional firefighters can retire after 20 years, Tiers Five and Six, they just, the survivor benefits for the vast majority have been gutted for those serving today, and that's more than 50% of our membership. We have a lower life expectancy than the normal population to support, our members to support their own families are having to work additional shifts and more years than they should. Now they're forced to bridge that gap. They don't have, they won't have a sufficient pension to bridge the gap to Social Security and that extra blanket to allow them to pay their bills. This is a dangerous situation. We're going to have people on the streets that maybe shouldn't be on the streets anymore. It shouldn't happen. We're asking the governor, legislature, to make the necessary changes to make our job more, just to make the job better and more attractive for future firefighters. And again, we've just listed some of the things that, again, my colleagues have already brought up. Our issues are the uniform, changing the uniform contribution rate, our FAS, the three-year lookback, again, which is crippling our members' opportunity to earn a decent pension, and our military service credits. More than half our members who served in the military in wartime don't have the same earnings, the same treatment as the military for people like me who came on before them. That's not right. You serve the military, you serve the military. They put their lives on the line before they came on the job. So I know I'm running long, but we're just, we're asking you to please help us in making this an attractive job and to help us help the residents of New York State. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in and representing all of the people that you are sworn to lead as president of the New York State Professional Firefighters Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next?
Working? Yeah, good. Chairman Jackson, Jackson, Senators Chu, Senator Weick. I am Michael Powers. I'm president of NICE-COBA. First and foremost, I applaud you for holding this joint public hearing, simply based off the fact that this is a severe issue in the state of New York that seriously needs to be addressed. And NICE-COBA, on behalf of NICE-COBA, and I'm sure many members here, we applaud you for holding this vital hearing. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today to discuss the challenges that our front line state employees are facing every day as a result of the staffing shortages and the state's struggle to attract, recruit, and retain adequate staffing levels. You've received a copy of our testimony, but I'd like to summarize some of the key points for you to consider, and I'll be happy to take any questions you may have. Current state of affairs for NICE-COBA members. NICE-COBA represents state employees in over 30 titles across some of the state's largest agencies, included, including but not limited to DOCS, OPWDD, OMH, and SUNY. The members of NICE-COBA working in these agencies are all experiencing a staffing crisis that is deteriorating employee morale to the lowest levels that I have witnessed in my 34 years of service. It should come to no one's surprise that the state's comptrollers report on state agency overtime spending routinely cites DOCS, OMH, and OPWDD as the state agencies creating the highest amounts of overtime. As the result of extreme overtime mandates, NICE-COBA members are being forced to work overtime on their regularly scheduled days off, taking them from their family and friends and not giving them the opportunity to decompress from working in some of the most dangerous and volatile working environments. The state, current state of affairs are not sustainable. In the past, the state's solution to address staffing and population declines is to close prisons, forcing staff to relocate across the state to facilities that they're not certain will even survive the next round of closures. That's not great for morale, and certainly not a great recruiting tool to appeal to prospective new employees. Attrition. Since January 1 of 2023, our ranks and corrections officers have lost approximately 1,000 correction officers. The loss of these positions can be attributed to retirements, resignation, terminations, and/or promotions and transfers. DOCS has 1,705 paid FTEs items under the current budget fill level. In 2022, the average monthly attrition rate for correction officers was 148 per month. From 2019 to present day, the five-year monthly attrition rate is 117 per month, or an average annual attrition rate of 1,380 correction officers. Recruiting. The state needs to understand that their best recruiters are the people that they currently employ, and those employees are being overworked and underappreciated. For years, working in corrections was a generational rite of passage for families across the state. Today, however, more and more of my members are dissuading their family members and friends from entering into a career in corrections or law enforcement because the risk no longer is worth the reward. The state has done away with competitive civil service exams for some NICE-COBA titles, as the candidate lists have been exhausted. Even with lower standards, which was brought up earlier, with the lower standards, we are not seeing enough people applying for our jobs in our ranks. Not long ago, DOCS would routinely graduate 70 to 80 recruits in a single academy class at the DOCS Training Academy. Last week's graduating class contained 30 new recruits, and they started with 44. Most recent classes have all started with lower numbers, and the graduation rates are not keeping up with the rate of attrition. Fixing Tier Six. One of the biggest complaints we see, we receive from our members is about the disparities created by the creation of Tier Six, which has been exhausted at this table. Nearly 60% of the NICE-COBA members are in Tier Six of the state's retirement system, 60%. Tier Six is creating glaring differences and financial disparities amongst coworkers, as two employees that work identical hours, performing identical job duties, will not only see differences in their bi-weekly net income due to higher contribution percentage rate, but they'll also be afforded vastly different pensions despite identical state service records, due to limits on earned overtime that can be applied to pension calculations. That's simply inherently wrong. Solutions for Tier Six. One possible remedy is to incentivize current employees would be to implement a fixed percentage employee contribution rate for all employees. If Tier Six requires employees to contribute for their entirety of their careers, a fixed rate would help create a sense of financial predictability. Another solution would be to remove the cap of the amount of year-to-year overtime that a Tier Six employee can apply towards their final average salary. Additionally, there should be a percentage cap on employee pension contributions for all mandatory overtime earnings. Don't penalize dedicated employees who are being forced to work or face discipline, causing them to spend time from their families by increasing their contribution rates. And finally, increase the pension benefit for NICE-COBA members who work at least 30 years to beyond 50% final average salary, to incentivize veteran employees of the workforce to continue working while they train the next generation of staff coming into the system. Violence and Halt. Since the implementation of the Halt Act on April 1 of 2022, violent assaults on staff have increased over 30% on inmate-on-inmate assaults. violent assaults on staff have increased over thirty percent on inmate-on-inmate assaults and inmate-on-staff assaults. Two thousand and twenty-two is the most violent year on our correctional facilities in New York State history. The data is available. Changes to the law are desperately needed, and the legislature's failure to act will just slap, is just another slap in the face of the men and women employed at our facilities. The Halt Law has impacted the majority of the incarcerated population who are just looking to do their time and go home at the earliest possible date. The Halt Law has incentivized bad behavior and misconduct to the detriment of everyone who works and lives in a facility. Our limited resources are now being redirected to a small percentage of bad actors, where it seems their only mission is to disrupt the normal operations of our facilities. The majority of the incarcerated are left to languish and go without their necessary programming, treatments, because the staff and resources are redirected to the worst of the worst. Legislative resistance and support. NICE-COBA submitted very modest proposals to the legislature to consider. Most of the proposals are met with resistance from our elected leaders in the state legislature. Senate bills like Senate Bill thirty-one twenty-one, which had increased the penalties for intentionally spitting saliva on a first responder, or Senate Bill fifty-five oh six, which establishes the crime of forcibly touching a corrections officer, which is currently on the rise and habitually happening to many of the females in our system. When common sense proposals will have an immediate impact in our facilities are met with resistance, it's no wonder that our members are frustrated and morale is as low as it is. When the healthcare workers across the state received a three thousand dollar COVID-nineteen bonus for their efforts, the members of NICE-COBA received nothing. The lack of recognition and respect to the members of NICE-COBA is appalling and needs to be addressed and rectified immediately through the ongoing collective bargaining process. However, we do appreciate the legislative support this past session in Senate Bill fifty-eight forty-nine, Senator Jackson, which you carried for us and got through both houses, and we're grateful for that, and we're awaiting it to be delivered to the governor. This bill provides NICE-COBA members in Section Eighty-Nine Retirement Plan with the death gamble benefit that would allow the beneficiaries of an employee who is retirement-eligible, who subsequently dies, to receive the member's pension benefit. This benefit to our members will only, this is a benefit that our members will only receive upon their death, and it's time that we start providing incentives for our members while they are still living. I'll note that that bill is the only bill that, we're the only law enforcement agency in the state that doesn't have that, that benefit. And conclusion, as you can see, we are in a period of crisis for the members of NICE-COBA. We're overworked, underappreciated, and we're reaching out, we're reaching our breaking point. We look forward to working with you so that we can bring much-needed relief for our members. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to take any questions, and we again, thank you for holding this vital hearing today.
Well, let me thank you, Mr. Powers, for coming in on behalf of the people that you represent in the New York State Correction Officers Police Benevolent Association, NICE-COBA. In fact, I have family members that are members of your union, and I hear from them about some of the issues and concerns that impact them and their families.
Well, you're all very, you're all very open to hearing our concerns, and we're appreciative of it. Thank you.
Okay. With that, now we open up to some questions from my colleagues. Senator White, I turn to you as the ranking member of the Republican Party.
Thank you, Senator Jackson. Is this on? Can you hear me?
Is it on?
Now can you hear me?
Bring it a little closer to you.
I have a bigger mouth, anyway. So I heard the concerns that you have, and first I want to thank you all for being here and for making such amazingly effective communications to us today, because you all said something, and it resonated very clearly, that the important jobs you do that serve our community really are dire to keeping a peaceful community, a safe community. And with that, for some reason, for many reasons, and we all know those reasons, we can't seem to recruit new help, which means that in the, in the years to come, our future of our state is going to be sorely lacking, whether it's public safety, corrections, fire departments. We need to make sure that we're ensuring the future of our state. With that, I ask you one simple question. Give me the top three, any of you can answer. Give me the top three solutions, because so often we come with the problems, but if we come with the solutions as well, it's easier to implement those. I just want to make it really clear. Give me your top one or your top three solutions on how we fix this right now.
Well, some of us already have bills that are, we, firefighters, we, and again, thank, thank all of you for getting our final average salary bill through the Senate and the Assembly. That's waiting to go to the governor. And especially, thank you, Senator Jackson, for, for taking care of that for us. But this is a bill that, it's not a new, it's, it's not a new, it's not a new benefit. This is correcting something that was stripped away from our members with the enactment of Tier Six. We have eleven locals throughout the state that sat down with their employer and negotiated this benefit. They gave up benefits to get this. They gave up concessions and money and other benefits to get this. That's how important it is for them to be able to, to earn a decent pension, and it was taken away. And this bill, all it does, and you know, the Senate, all of you understood it, the Assembly did, we're hoping that the governor does, but it just, it restores a benefit that our members paid for. You know, that would be a good start in showing that, you know, everyone is serious about, you know, taking care of our concerns. And from there, we all have similar, you know, issues going forward with just repairing some of the damage that Tier's five and six have done to our members' ability to retire with dignity. I mean, that's all, that's all we're looking to do, is retire with some kind of dignity. But to take away a benefit that, that members bought and paid for, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, you go to the grocery store, right? You buy a cart of groceries, you pay at the tell, and then you get to the door and they want to take your groceries away. It just doesn't, you know, it's, it's not right. So that's, as far as we're concerned, that's.
Senator, I, I would like to add to that. My perspective is a little bit different because I represent ninety unions and.
Can you respond to it and identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Senator. Yes, that's Pete Meringlo, chairman of the New York State Public Employee Conference, currently with ninety unions in our organization. And it's been a number-one priority for us, and I've canvassed all of the unions. And yes, we all have our individual bills in, but we also know that the individual bills are going to be looked at, and they're going to be grouped in and maybe vetoed on one veto message. We're looking at, we met with the Senate Majority Leader, we've also met with the Speaker, and we proposed that. We know that you can't go from Tier Six to Tier One or Tier Two or Tier Three. We know that. But we're talking about going just down incrementally. You know, a little piece of the pie everywhere we go. The unique position that I'm in is every one of my ninety members wants something. Somebody wants a Social Security offset. Somebody needs this. And we're trying to group, and the members of PEC have been tremendous. I'm very proud to represent them, and we're trying to come up with something that we could all sell to our members. And we know it's not going to be the whole, the whole pie. I mean, and just as a point, my colleague, Mike Powers, having worked in correction for thirty-six years, eighteen of them inside the jails, and I think a monumental issue that I saw, I'm very fortunate, I don't suffer the tier problems, I'm a lot older than all of you here, but I'm Tier One, all right? I came out of Vietnam, I took every city test, and I was hired during Tier One. But what's really draconian is I'm running down a hallway to save an inmate, to save a doctor, to save a judge. I'm running next to a young man who's Tier Five or Tier Six. Why is my life more important? Why is my family protection more important than his? It should not be. And I say that because it took this organization with leaders up here four and a half years to get the governor to sign the presumptive disability bill. We lobbied that bill for four and a half years. People at this table were with me. And the issue we had is that, we said, you know what? One time I got crazy and I said, you know, next time we won't go in. Next time our members will stop. But that's, that's a lot of nonsense, because our members are not trained that way. All of our members are trained to go in. So when they went in to save a thousand people, two thousand were running out. And that's why when you hear at this table, it has to be equal. My life, their life should not be more important than the people that we represent. And I think, again, I have to come from a different avenue because I have ninety unions, and everybody wants something different, but we're, we're working together to see if we could just drop it down incrementally every year. And Pete was with me when we mentioned that to the Majority Leader, and she said, you know what, Peter? That's something to entertain, because we know if we come to you with forty bills, you're not going to do forty bills. And lastly, at the risk of making it sound like a no-brainer, Senator, but I've been in your office, the legislators are Tier Six. You're Tier Five and you're Tier Six, and I say it should be a no-brainer to fix, because you should be helping us, and you all deserve it. So again, I don't, I don't try to make light of that, but Senator, I've heard you, and you know what you have hanging in your office, I won't say it here, but that's important to us.
I brought a visual aid, Mike O'Meara from the Police Conference of New York, to make a synopsis of everybody's testimony up here.
And who are you again?
I'm going to use my visual aid here.
And who are you?
Mike O'Meara from the Police Conference of New York. This is, this is a synopsis of everybody's testimony up here today.
Everyone, the synopsis of everyone's testimony today?
Yeah.
And are you wearing a T-shirt?
That's the synopsis.
It says Tier Six.
Turn around.
Tier Six sucks.
Make that a hashtag.
Obviously, during the testimony, that's basically what we've heard.
You're basi, I'm sorry.
No. Basically what we've heard, and so now it's up to all of us to fix it.
Yeah, can I, Senator Pete Patterson again, can I just make one comment?
Go ahead.
That's an excellent question, and that's our responsibility to come to you with those answers. My committee, we've been doing research, we represent a lot of great organizations that came up with great ideas without getting in specifics, pandering back and forth. That's our obligation to bring to you. And I'll, I'll finish on this note. When we look at this thing and we start going through this journey together, we've got to remember, when I was hired, I was Tier Two, and as I grew up to be a big cop instead of a little cop, I saw changes made, and the legislature looked at Tier Two and said, you know something? We didn't make a mistake, however, however, there's certain things that we may or may not have, shouldn't have done, and they fixed it. Three-quarters disability was restored, the death gamble, and I hope Mike's unit gets it as well, because it's rightfully deserved. We got it restored. When I was hired, we didn't have that. Several other benefits, excuse me, we got restored. We're doing, we want to do the same thing, take a hard look. This legislative body has done this numerous times with other items without specifics. You revisited it, and you said, you know something? Yeah, we think it was okay, but we can make it better. And with that, you know, like, we'll, we'll give you the items that our members are looking to make better, and let's work together and make it better. That's all, all we're asking.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree with Pete more. Mike Powers, president of NICE-COBA, I'm sorry, I couldn't agree with Pete and Peter as well, you know, but just to answer your question real quickly, fixes to Tier Six, the death gamble legislation, vital to our members, to the rank. Acknowledgement, acknowledgement of the difficult job that we do. You know, it, it's truly amazing to me that, that much of our advocacy, and I work with Peter and Peter and Mike and Sam, and you know, I've, I've been here in Albany for ten years, and I've enjoyed it, and we've had good relations, and, but to go forward and not see, not have that be recognized is difficult for us, and that's why I applaud you for this hearing today. You know, serious amendments to the Halt Act, serious amendments, and I'm not calling for a repeal, but real amendments to that Halt Act, because it's really, the state spent hundreds of millions of dollars for the Halt Act that encompasses eleven hundred of the incarcerated individuals in the, in the system. There's twenty thousand incarcerated individuals in the system. There's eighteen thousand. All that money and all that is being funded to these individuals, and the ones that are doing their time are not getting the credit because of the serious disruptions. And they are serious disruptions. The assaults are brutal, and they're, in my thirty-four years, I've seen these coming across, and there was never any stakeholder input when this bill came down the line. And it's a difficult bill for us to swallow, and that is beating our morale, because our mental and physical and mental state of our members is at a breaking point. I've, and the countless since April one of two thousand and twenty-two, I've received countless calls from individuals who are compromising their state retirement for their mental health because of the serious hours that they're doing. Not only are they getting mandated on their regular shifts, the state is taking their days off because we can't facilitate the facility, and those are serious issues that need to be addressed for us.
Thank you. If I can, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to turn to Senator Chu for some questions if she has any, because we have to move to the second panel.
You will be able to answer that. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us today. It's a great opportunity. I'm State Senator Yuen Chu. It's really hard, warming to hear your dedication for your life, for your career, with the sacrifice for your family, but also it's just sad to also hear how much you're in a leadership, to see your membership, how hard to recruit and retain your, your new members. And I do believe public service is, you know, from the bottom of the heart, you want, you love the state, you really want to be a force member for this society, and in order, we already know public service is, it's a dedication for us. It's not going to make our family be, you know, the capitalism, go that route. We need, already need to compete within the private sectors, but through the testimony, I can also hear, even we have different tier systems, different pension package, different retirement years. Internally, we also compete with the different positions, with the career ladder, how we can move on, how we can compensate the dedication, the word, your members being contribute to our position, our society. So actually, I just want to say, our public employee has chosen this to dedicate their life and career to serve the people of this state, and it is our duty to honor them. So I really want to thank all of you, and I just want to give the time to, maybe you could, Kurt, you can address, like, what would be the, how do we fix this internally? In-house title or different tier, twenty-five years, twenty years? How do we fix this?
Kurt Nolan, Executive Director and Counsel for the PBA. I can, I don't, I don't need to beat up Tier Six anymore than my colleagues have done. Tier Six sucks, but what I can tell you is if you're wondering why my members leave for other law enforcement agencies, it's because we have to work an extra five years just to get the Tier Six that we know sucks. So that's the biggest reason why we leave, to go to other law enforcement agencies, but I can tell you as somebody who was on the job, you know, when we were fighting to get our pay bill for our contract, we had to go to arbitration because the state, in my opinion, wasn't dealing fairly with us or recognizing the work that we do, trivializing the work that we do. You know, when we're lobbying for these bills to get our members equity, you know, NICE-COBA is the only one that doesn't have that bill, we're, we're one of, I think, three percent of the law enforcement agencies in the state of New York, and now, you know, Livingston County and other sheriff's offices have recognized, you can't recruit police officers with a twenty-five-year retirement, you definitely can't keep them. But, you know, we're doing these things, and the state's response is, we don't have the money. And as a member who was hearing that from my union reps at the time, when I wasn't running the union, I said to myself, the state finds money for what the state wants to find money for. And when you're a police officer and you're being told that your pension isn't worth it, and then you see other bills that I won't get into passed that cost the state a significant amount of money, it's a slap in the face, and you realize how little the state actually values you. But, you know, to my earlier comment, it's not just about money, it's not just about pension benefits, I don't think anybody gets into this job for that. You know, you can't make the job harder, you can't vilify police officers and corrections officers, give them fewer pay and benefits, and then question seriously why everyone's leaving. You know, I, as a police officer, I said to myself, this work is, when I got on the job in two thousand and nine, I could not have been more proud to be a police officer, and you realize that your work is no longer valued, and I think that our members especially, because not only everybody here at this table represents members that feel undervalued, we get compared and undervalued compared to our colleagues. So I think if the state is serious about wanting to recruit and retain. is serious about wanting to recruit and retain public employees, you know, they have to be serious about at least giving people equity when it comes to pension and benefits. And also, I can tell you from the labor relations side, it's great that you guys care, that you're here to listen, but my job is, a significant part of it is labor relations, and the state doesn't care. It's, as a police officer, we're constantly told, it's not just what you can do, it's what you should do. And in my experience, the state does what it can do. It doesn't care about whether it's the right thing to do. And when we're advocating for our members, that's never a consideration. We're allowed to do it, we're going to do it, that's the end of the story. So I think there has to be a change in the stance from state government as how they deal with unions. You guys know, when you speak to people, they're going to give you the answers you want to hear. And when the state is making serious decisions about public safety, and they're only talking to agency heads, they're living in an echo chamber. And I think that unions raise serious issues that are going on within our agencies, that the leaders of those agencies are never going to bring to your attention, because that's their job. They don't want to lose their job. But we serve a vital role in informing the public as to what's really going on behind closed doors. And I think that unions need to be given a bigger role before these legislative decisions are made. I think that some of us are subject matter experts, our members obviously are. And before the state does knee-jerk reactions to, you know, public outcry, I think we really need to study the realistic impacts of things like what NYSKOB is talking about. Thank you.
So let me thank you all for coming in, and more specifically, even though you have PEC, the Employee Public Employees Conference, and there's ninety unions that are working there together, I think each one of you and your unions should communicate with absolute clarity what are your primary issues and concerns. Because some of them will be bunched in with others for moving, for example, over fifty percent of the employees and all of the pensions are in Tier Six. So, and there's only five percent, or now four and a half percent or four percent in Tier Five. So the goal is to try to move tiers down to Tier Four, and those that are looking to go into Tier Four. But so let's see if we can start off with Tier Five first and open the door. We got to open that door, crack that door open, so that we can get movement. And based on testimony, obviously, Tom DiNapoli is the sole trustee, the sole trustee of all of the pensions in the tiers. And so, and I believe that he's willing to work with us to the extent, as long as the money is there, and knowing that it takes a willingness to look at what you're doing and on behalf of, you know, who you're doing it for. And that's important. And everyone, you've explained to us, you know, you're doing the same job, but you're in a different pension tier, only because you came as an employee later or earlier. But we need to look at those individuals that are not taken us seriously with respects to doing what's right on behalf of the employees of New York State. And as you know, the Commissioner, the President of the Civil Service Commission will be here this afternoon, giving testimony as to what they are doing within the Department of Civil Service. One of the statistics is that the number of employees that they have is much reduced from what it was ten years ago. So we got to look at all of that in order to keep advocating on behalf of the members that you represent, which are the people of New York State. And so I am willing to, I'm committed to willing to do that along with my colleagues. But we have to all work together and not be divisive. And I'm not saying we are, but we need to be united and moving forward. So let me thank you all for coming in. And if you haven't submitted your testimony, if you have not, please do it, even later, it's better than not having anything, okay? So thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we're going to hear from panel number two, which was scheduled from 12:10 to 1:00 PM. So we're just running a few minutes late. The New York State Public Employees Federation, PEF, New York State United Teachers, NICEIT, Civil Service Employees Association, CSEA, the New York State American Federation of Labor and Congress of Industrial Organizations, which is a New York State AFL-CIO. So good afternoon, panel two members. I called all of you out as far as your organization and your acronym, PEF, NICEIT, CSEA, and New York State AFL-CIO. So with that, I ask you to begin your testimony with PEF going first, and I ask you to please introduce yourself, your position with your unions or federations, and the name of it, so that, and every time you respond to a question, it would be good to give your name so that people know who's responding, okay? So with that, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Senator Jackson, Senator Chu, and Senator Weick. Thank you so much for holding this hearing today. My name is Randy D. Antonio. I am Vice President of the New York State Public Employees Federation. I'm also Chair of our statewide political action committee. PEF represents approximately fifty thousand professional, scientific, and technical employees in New York State agencies, and we have over three thousand titles. Before I begin, I would like to take a moment of personal privilege to thank you, Senator Jackson, for your leadership and for your willingness to take on really tough and complex issues like this. We appreciate everything you do to support our membership and to talk to us and provide solutions that support the work they do for New Yorkers and to help us deliver the most efficient services. We appreciate your willingness to hold this hearing. We want to share ideas, not only about the problems that we have, but also about the solutions that we think might help turn the tide, because we do need to turn the tide. It's like the Titanic. This problem isn't new. We've been going downhill for a number of years. So what is the problem? You've heard from a lot of folks today, you know, we are not able to recruit and to staff our most critical agencies. This is not a new issue. We have gone through a decade of decimating our agencies, of flat budgets. The state has cut staffing as regulation and oversight responsibilities have increased. Right now, we have over twelve thousand five hundred vacant positions in state agencies. And as you heard, to meet the additional staffing needs with no new resources, the state has become overly reliant on overtime, both mandatory and voluntary, to meet those needs. The outcome of those hours of work are time away from family, time away from the things that you need to do to take care of yourself, but also leading to burnout, to stress, to low morale, all increasing the likelihood of people leaving these jobs. This coupled with the implementation of Tier Five and Tier Six, which now is about fifty-two percent of our memberships, the onset and the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, and the diminishing labor pool and their interest in coming to work in the public sector have really undercut the ability of the state to attract and to retain staff. We are not the employer, we were twenty years ago when my mom recommended, come work for the state, it's a good job. We are not the employer of choice anymore. You know, it was alluded to how much overtime is going on in New York State workforce. And I just want to give you some numbers, and it is in the written testimony we provided. The number of state employees that have dropped in the last ten years, we've been reduced by over thirty-two thousand state employees since 2012. We've paid overtime from 2012, fourteen point four million to twenty-two million dollars last year in overtime, or an increase of fifty-three percent. The total cost is one point three six billion dollars. That's with a B. One point three six billion in 2022 in overtime. Now, since 2021, the state has lost sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight employees. This is due to attrition. This is not due to retirement. This is not due to disability. This is the highest level of attrition recorded by the Office of the State Controller in the decades since he began doing this report. Staff are fleeing state employment. So the question we need to ask ourselves and to this body is why? And we hear it from our members. We hear it all the time. They can earn more in the private sector. They have more flexibility in the private sector. They get more respect on the job. They don't come into unsafe or unhealthy workplaces. And right now, the benefits are as comparable. And when you put all those things together, we do not end up meeting the goal of being an attractive employer. Our members are frustrated that they can't do their jobs efficiently, they can't do their jobs effectively, because they don't have enough staff, and doing more with less, especially in our human service jobs, in our healthcare jobs, is not safe, not only for them but for the patients. They're tired of being overworked and undercompensated. So what's the impact of all this? As the state agency staffing levels have fallen, lawmakers have done great work writing new laws. We appreciate a lot of them, but the reality is that a lot of those laws take time and implementation to really address the needs. And the reality is that right now, many agencies don't have the staffing capacity to fulfill its responsibilities. We don't have enough wage inspectors, so enforcing the state's labor laws against bad employers are difficult. New Yorkers get hurt by that. We don't have enough staff to process licensures and certifications for businesses. New Yorkers get hurt by that. We don't have enough staff auditors to collect taxes and to audit businesses. That brings revenue into the state, but we are not competitive in our pay, so it's difficult to hire for those positions. You know, providing appropriate care to the most at-risk New Yorkers, I'm a social worker by trade. I've worked for OPWDD for twenty-six years. We have closed over a hundred and thirty group homes because of staffing since 2019. We can't effectively do what we want to do to monitor and enforce, you know, the safety on the state's roads and bridges. We need more DOT engineers. And we appreciate, there has been legislation that has been passed to support some of these things, but it has not come to fruition. Supporting programs for the incarcerated population, you know, we want to make sure people are successful and that they're safe. And you heard from our brothers and sisters in those facilities, they are not safe for either those incarcerated or those working there. You know, addressing unsafe work sites, the list goes on and on about what state employees, what government employees, what municipal workers do for their communities. And if we don't address this, our communities suffer. So what are our prescriptions for addressing this? Obviously, we think Tier Six sucks. No, fix Tier Six. And, you know, this was once the career plan. People came into state government and they stayed because they knew, you know, as a professional, maybe they'll make a little bit less, but there was, you know, something to look towards that they knew would help them in their retirement years, help them care for their families, for themselves. It was designed to reward longevity, but this plan does not provide that incentive. I talked to our newer members, and they come in in their twenties, and they're like, I got to work forty-four years, you know, forty-two years before I can get anything. It's too far away for them to care enough about it. It's not real. So it doesn't incentivize them to stay. So there's a couple of things we think need to be done. We think we need to reduce the mandatory contributions, the range, and make them standardized to three percent. We think the two percent final average salary calculation at twenty years of service, which is currently one point five, needs to go back to what it was for Tier Four. We think that, you know, the retirement eligibility needs to go back to fifty-five and thirty. But there's other things in addition to Tier Six that we really would like looked at. You know, we represent professional staff, and most of them have advanced degrees. Most of them have found, especially after COVID, that they have other opportunities, that they can go into the private sector where, you know, telemedicine has changed the world of healthcare, where hybrid work, you know, for our insurance claims inspectors and our data analysts, you know, this has changed the playing field. You know, they have other options that they might not have had. And we are seeing people leave after many years of service that we never historically would have. Now, we do, you know, we fought to have a pay grade study included in this year's budget, and we are thankful that that was put in. And we thank you for your support on this initiative. We know that Commissioner Hoag is going to work diligently on looking at what frankly has been an archaic system. We haven't looked at many of the titles within the civil service structure in decades. We haven't kept up with the private sector. And to look at these issues really would help stop the bleeding. But I have to say, there have been other improvements that we really appreciate in civil service. You know, some salary of reallocations, geographic pay, waiving fees for exams, making them more accessible in different parts of the state. All those things have been barriers, and we're working towards fixing them. And again, they all do take time. One thing that I need to bring up that's a little bit uncomfortable for people to hear, but it's necessary, is the state has a problem with workplace culture. We have a lot of agencies where toxic work environments, bullying is the norm. You know, for new employees, when they come in, you know, it isn't always the welcome wagon that greets them. You know, they come in, they don't have anybody with mentoring them, walking them around, getting them the right equipment. You're working in old buildings in many instances. So you think about a new employee's experience, and they're like, oh my God, what did I get myself into? And it's really something that a welcoming culture versus a bullying culture really changes the trajectory of whether that person is going to stay employed. Our members continue to report holdover management, where bullying and aggressive behaviors are okay. And we really need a standard of conduct. We need staff educated and managers educated and held accountable. You know, somebody mentioned in the prior panel that we're a legacy employer. A lot of our agencies have generations of staff. Mom worked there, grandma worked there, our aunt worked there. And these are the same people who are telling their family and friends, don't go work there. From the mandatory overtime to how you're treated, don't go work there. We ask that you and your colleagues join with the New York State Assembly majority and pass legislation to end bullying. That's Senate Bill 3065 and Assembly Bill 1202. We also ask that the lag--
President--
I'm sorry?
Your time is up.
Oh, no.
Can you close, please, if you don't mind? You can respond on questions that come to you.
Okay. I should have kept track. I didn't see it.
The clock is here, everyone, please.
I got it.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Finish the--
All right. I'll finish very quickly. Lag payroll. So for those of us who've been around for a while, they keep your paychecks when you first start. For new employees, not having a paycheck for five to six weeks is really a detriment to trying to keep them. They have bills to pay, and it doesn't make any sense. Trying to create a student loan forgiveness incentive on the front end, you know, signing up, five years state service, you get this amount of reward. And also, one last thing. In 2012, under the prior administration, a lot of our resource, human resources, payroll, business centers, IT, have been taken out and siloed in different ways. Agency employees don't have access to these folks on a routine basis. This really changes how they get turnaround time on their issues in the workplace. If you have a problem with your paycheck, if you have a problem with mileage. That's a minor thing, but it makes a huge difference when you work somewhere and you can't access information. And lastly, right next to me, I have about five thousand petitions--
I thought the last one was lastly. So there's another name, lastly? Go ahead.
There's another name. I just want to point out, these were collected at the state fair. They're petitions to fix Tier Six. These were not signed primarily by state employees, but by the public in Syracuse. This was one week. Members of the public are worried about the staffing of agencies. They see the decimation in their communities. And we just wanted to share with you, there is a lot of interest in building up state government and reinvestment, and we appreciate your time today. Thank you.
So what are you doing with those--
We'll be continuing to collect them, and we'll be delivering them.
Okay. Thank you.
But we just wanted to let you know, they'll be on their way.
NICEIT, New York State United Teachers, next, and then Civil Service Employees Association, and then New York State AFL-CIO.
Good morning.
Pull the mic up closer so we can hear you, please.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Good morning. Chairperson Jackson, Senator Weick, Senator Chu, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm Pete Savage, Deputy Director of Legislation for New York State United Teachers. NICEIT represents nearly seven hundred thousand professionals who work in or are retired from New York's schools, colleges, and healthcare facilities. Public schools, colleges, and universities are the center of our communities. Our goal is to provide top-notch education for all students, and well-trained professional educators are vital to achieving this goal. But New York is facing a teacher shortage. We are projected to need a hundred and eighty thousand new teachers in the next decade, and there has been a fifty percent drop in teacher education program enrollment since 2009. We cannot afford to just sit idly by and allow this to happen. We are seeing shortages in other roles, like bus drivers, which is impacting student schedules and learning experiences. To counter this, we must promote the-- We are projected to need 180,000 new teachers in the next decade, and there has been a 50% drop in teacher education program enrollment since 2009. We cannot afford to just sit idly by and allow this to happen. We are seeing shortages in other roles, like bus drivers, which is impacting student schedules and learning experiences. To counter this, we must promote the value of educational careers, ensure safe school environments, enhance job protections, and provide funding for our institutions, along with securing a strong retirement benefit for all public employees. Retirement security is a major impact, a major issue impacting all public employers and their ability to recruit and retain their workforce. Specifically, Tier Five and Tier Six represent significant reductions in benefits when compared to previous tiers. In short, our Tier Six members must work longer, pay more into the system, and ultimately earn less in retirement than their counterparts. Last year, working with our partners in the legislature and Governor Holkel, we changed the vesting period for Tier Six from 10 years to five years. And this was a... This was a good first step in tier equity and changing Tier Six, but much more is needed going forward. Building on last year's momentum, NICEIT has launched the Fix Tier Six campaign to address benefit reductions for our members and other public employees. This is a top priority for our members and will be going forward. We will seek legislative partners in the upcoming session to rectify retirement disparities, to attract and retain the best educators. In addition to addressing retirement equity, NICEIT's Take a Look at Teaching initiative aims to bolster and diversify New York's educator pipeline. The union-led effort promotes student engagement, entices career changers to seek new paths in the education field, and emphasizes the importance of workplace diversity. Central to this initiative are the Grow Your Own programs that foster ties between P-12 school districts, higher education, and community partners. These programs target early experiences for aspiring educators and reinforce community relationships. They address the need for more diversity in the teaching workforce by recruiting and supporting students of color, and can be especially beneficial in rural communities facing significant recruitment and retention issues. As we address the current education shortage, New York must smooth pathways for aspiring educators. Whether they are students, career changers, or teaching assistants, we must simplify the teacher certification process. Addressing retention and recruitment issues is a must to ensure our state's long-term educational outlook and viability as an economic leader. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. You have my testimony in front of you, and I look forward to continuing this dialogue as we move forward into the session and beyond.
Well, thank you. And you are like moving along. That's saving us time. Time is what?
Money.
Money. So next, we're going to hear from Civil Service Employees Association. Hit it. Tap it. All right, somebody exchange, give them a mic, please. Let's just move that one out the way. Push it, push it out the way.
Great, all set?
Yeah.
Thank you, Senator Jackson. Senators Chu and Weig, thank you for being here. Thanks for having this hearing. My name is Joshua Terry, and I am the Legislative Director for the Civil Service Employees Association. We represent about 300,000 members from Montauk to Buffalo.
That's all?
From Watertown to Binghamton. We're across the whole state. State government, local government, school districts, public authorities. You know, we've all, and everybody up here today and everybody on the committee, we've spoken at length about the problems we're facing. I don't think we're having a new conversation today, because I don't think we've all spoken about it. We all recognize the problems we have. But this was brought to us by years of austerity budgets and just outright neglect of the state and local government workforce. That includes two new pension tiers in, over a several-year period. And that's resulted in local governments, we have 28,000 fewer employees than we did a decade ago. And as Pef testified earlier, 30,000 in state government, fewer employees. Now, that's coupled with the fact that 26% of the state workforce is eligible to retire in the next five years. Now, does that mean not everybody's retiring in the next five years? But that is out there, and that is something that we really need to be worried about. Now, it would make sense if this drop in employees coincided with a drop in demand for services, but we know that's not the case, especially since COVID and post-COVID. And this was, again, alluded to by Pef. We have massive overtime problems in the state because there is still a high demand for services. Over the last decade, an $830 million increase in overtime spending, and that equals to seven, almost eight million additional hours. Again, this is coming from intentional budgetary and policy decisions that choked the ability for state agencies and local governments to hire employees. That is all where this stems from. Now, the perfect example of this is the agency that's directed with hiring and onboarding staff, the Department of Civil Service. 26% reduction in staff since 2012. When you lose a quarter of your staff, and this could be for a small office, a small state agency, or a massive one, you are not going to be as effective at doing your job. Like, there is just no way that you can do it. And we've seen this. So we've seen the time to recruit, test, and onboard employees is now reaching upwards of six months for state, for state government agencies, for state agencies. By the time somebody gets a job offer, and I have a neighbor who went through this, she applied to become, she wanted to go work for the state, they told her it would take her six months to be, if she, if she got the job. She went somewhere else, because she can't wait six, nobody's can wait six months for work. So as we see the public sector and public employees taking on longer shifts, additional shifts, working overtime, facing more difficult working conditions, the private sector's offering higher wages, flexible working arrangements, sign-on bonuses. And it's not like how it was before. The state's not just competing, and local governments are not just competing with your traditional employers. So our members that work in DOT that have CDLs, their options could be work for the state, DOT, maybe FedEx or UPS. But now we're competing with the gig economy, where people work where they want to work, when they want to work, how they want to work. They really create their own schedule. So this is creating even additional strains on how we're recruiting, and we need to adapt to it. We need to create new policies that allow us to compete. And over the last few years, and Chairman Jackson, we're really thankful for you, we've made some very positive changes over the last few years. We've made the first dance into Tier Six, which is great, you know, and we're not done, but we know, but making those first two changes was, I think, instrumental in getting the ball rolling and having this conversation. We're also really happy with what we did in this year's budget, waiving civil service fees for exams, allowing continuous recruitment exams by the Department of Civil Service, better promoting civil service exams so people know that they actually exist. That's all great stuff, and we really want to keep working with you, and I know we will going into next session, on more ideas. But we want to build on this, and it's kind of a few different pillars that we want to talk about. The first is Tier Six reform. Standardizing contributions is critical to recruiting and retaining employees. Right now, if you take a promotion, you're going to make more money, and you're going to most likely pay a higher rate for your pension. So that would really, if somebody's looking at the finances of it, would probably think, why would I take this promotion? Why am I going to end up losing half of my raise because I'm in a new bracket for Tier Six? It disincentivizes people from being career public servants and civil servants going forward. So we promote, we support a standardized 3% rate going forward to eliminate this financial penalty for employees who want to make a career in public service. The second piece is the retirement benefit at 20 years. Tier Four encouraged people to be career state and local government employees or school district employees. At 20 years, a Tier Four employee was entitled to 40% of their final average salary. Under Tier Six, it's 35% at the same point. And that might not look like, you know, it doesn't sound like a huge difference, but take two employees, one that's Tier Four, one that's Tier Six. They both retire after 20 years on the dot, $75,000 final average salary. The Tier Four employee over a 20-year retirement is making $75,000 more in retirement. I mean, now we're talking real bucks, like, we're talking real dollars then. So we support legislation that's out there that would equalize the pension multiplier for Tier Six employees to equalize to Tier Four, and also Tier Five, who has the same one, in order to encourage them to stay on as state and local government workers. Outside of Tier Six, we still have a lot of changes we need to make. When a state employee is hired, they're subject to a lag pay of one month. So you start, let's say you start state employment today, you're not getting your first check for at least one month. In addition, the state withholds one day of pay for every pay period for five pay periods. So you are not getting a full paycheck for nearly 12 weeks, three months, that you don't get a full paycheck. There was, I'm sure at the time they did this, which I think was the late 80s, there was a reason behind it, and it was, probably had to do with preserving some cash for a crisis. But I don't think we're in that situation anymore. And if you want to try to bring somebody on into state service, and you tell them that they are not going to get a full paycheck for three months, when they could go work nearly anywhere else and get a paycheck, a full paycheck within two weeks, they're going to, they're going to walk out the door, especially if they're lower income, if they have young children. Like, this is not a viable solution anymore. So we, and we want to work with all of you on this committee, going forward to eliminate this garnishment in the law, allow people to, for new employees, allow them to get a full paycheck for what they work rather than having pay withheld. We need to keep pursuing new ways to examine potential state and local government workers. This includes funding additional virtual options in, virtual test options in civil service. We need, no longer can we wait for people to come to the state. We can't wait for them to come take a test on a Saturday on a leap year, every four leap years. That, that way it doesn't work anymore. We need to meet them where they are, and that could be at their home at midnight, it could be very early in the morning, but we need to give them options of when they can take a test in order to look at state service. Because if we wait for them to come to us, it's shown they're not going to come. Lastly is, I talked about this for a minute, but is streamlining the onboarding process. It should not take four to six months to bring somebody into state service, because they will leave. And my neighbor is an example of somebody that is going to leave. So we need sufficient staffing and funding into the Department of Civil Service and the other state agencies in order to bring on employees much more, in a quicker way, a much more methodical way rather than them waiting. And so we, you know, that's an overarching issue, but we really, we want to work with this committee and the legislature to start achieving the gains that we need. And I'll just, I'll end by saying this. We, you know, we didn't get here overnight. This has been decades in the making, and this has been through numerous governors. It's, the blame is not on one, one person or one party, but we need to start making the changes now. We need to start investing in our state agencies. Our state agencies are always the ones that get cut first when we're facing any sort of deficit, and it leads us to the, to the situation we're in now. So we need to actually make investments, we need to invest in technology, and invest in staff in order for them to start bringing on the employees that they need. So Senator, thank you so much.
Well, thank you on behalf of all of the 300,000 employees of CSEA. And next, and our final panelist is the New York State American Federation of Labor, Congress of Industrial Organizations, commonly as New York State AFL-CIO. Mike.
Thank you. I think this is on, Senator, Mr. Chairman, senators, thank you. My name is Mike Nydell. I'm the Legislative Director of the New York State AFL-CIO. We represent two and a half million members, union members across the state and over 3,000 locals. We're very diverse, and on behalf of our President Mario Solanton and our team, thank you for doing this today, and thank you for the invite. We really appreciate you being here and listening. You have the written testimony. I'll be brief. I want to highlight a few things and maybe tie together some of the pieces my colleagues have talked about and some of the things Panel One talked about, because I think you're hearing a recurring theme here. One, we're not just here to talk about staffing, we're here to talk about the services, the vital public services that your constituents rely on, that all taxpayers rely on. And whether it's healthcare and hospitals and mental health, whether it's mass transit, our buses, roads, bridges, trains, whether it's education, critical infrastructure, waters, sewers, our businesses rely on this, our economy relies on it, vulnerable people in this state rely on it. So we're really talking about the vital public services that all of us, that need in this state, that makes our state run and makes our economy click. When we talk about staffing, we're talking about public services. And my colleague Josh, Josh just talked a little bit about this. This was decades in the making. We routinely, cycle after cycle, if we run into economic problems, we go after these public services, we go after the staff that provides it, we cut. What we need, a more reliable, stable, progressive, and fair revenue system. We're going into a difficult budget next year, and we're already at crisis level. So we're all very fearful of what's going to happen to the services and the people we care for and in the state as we approach next year. So we just want to caution everyone that the state needs to continue its commitment for the services it provides, but also its commitment to school districts and local governments on the assistance it provides to those services as well at the local level. You've heard a lot about Tier Six. I just want to emphasize one thing my colleagues talked about. You started down the path of how to fix this a few years ago. One of the things you did was to address, one of the most penalizing pieces of Tier Six, was when employees are asked, or I shouldn't say asked, when they're required to do mandatory overtime, there's a penalty in effect that in the following year, their contributions can go up if that overtime increases their salary enough. We suspended that, but only temporarily. That expires, and we need to revisit that going into next year. So we want to draw your attention to that, because that's, not only are we not giving credit for all of the overtime that these individuals work, and they can't increase their pension, but they're also paying more money at the end of the day for service credit they can't even get. So we need to take another look at that, and hopefully that's an opportunity to reopen many of the other priorities that have been identified, because all of it equals a disincentive to come into public service. So Tier Six is obviously critical. I also want to highlight something my colleague Randy talked about, safety in the workplace and the atmosphere. We had staffing problems before we went into the pandemic, when all of our members collectively, whether it was a public safety facility, or a hospital, or administrative office that folks need to go into, there wasn't adequate personal protective equipment, there weren't adequate protocols, there is violence problems, there's bullying problems, there's violence in hospitals, it's rampant, it's, there's threats of violence in schools. We took a good step this year by passing and getting signed a School Violence Prevention Bill. We need to do more and build on these things. If people do not feel safe and secure in the workplace from violence, or if they're worried about bringing home an infectious disease to their families, they're not going to stay for very long. So we couldn't have possibly known how bad the pandemic was, but now, now that we've been through it, we need to prepare for the next one and do a better job with safety and violence prevention in the workplace. Along those lines, we hear it over and over again every time we ask, what do you need to stay at work? Childcare. Childcare, childcare, childcare. The legislature and governor get a lot of credit. Over the last couple of years, we've done a lot to expand eligibility for childcare subsidies. We're doing more at the state level to supplement what the federal government provides. I will highlight one thing we support, which is facilitated enrollment, particularly for our members who work in 24-hour facilities with unpredictable shifts and mandatory overtime. They're not always able to get to the local county office and fill out the appropriate paperwork, which can be very onerous. Facilitate enrollment does that. It gets the application process done. We work with not-for-profit groups and workforce development groups to help individuals who are otherwise eligible for childcare assistance from the state or local governments to get through all those barriers and take care of that work. So we would point that program out today as one way to help working people get access to childcare. So with all of that said, I think a lot of other good ideas onto the civil service front have been started. We urge you to take into consideration those proposals. We have some more specifics in our written testimony on that front, but my colleagues also highlighted that as well. So with all that said, we'll, we'll wrap it up there, and obviously, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer anything that you might have.
Well, first, let me thank you all individually, Peter, Randy, Joshua, and Mike, coming and representing your employer. Mike, Legislative Director, Joshua, the Legislative Director, Randy, Vice President, and Peter, Deputy Director of Legislation. It's important that you all came in today in order to give more specifically about your organization or your union, so that we can focus on it and then come together and work together in unity in order to move forward on many fronts as we can, knowing that it's going to take leadership at the governance level, and also that the money is there where necessary, and, you know, people... And, you know, people have complimented Tom DiNapoli as, uh, the individual that basically is the caretaker of the funds. Uh, and last year, as you know, um, he said that we had a couple of billion dollars more than we really were expecting. So everyone is anticipating, uh, that it's not gonna be that way over the next couple of years. But we're moving forward and making the changes that we feel we need to make. And I need to say to all of you, uh, I am a former employee and staff member of PEF, I need, you need to know that, and I'm a retiree of PEF also. So I just wanted to bring it out front, so people say, well, you never mentioned the fact that you possibly have a conflict of interest. It's not a conflict of interest, it's by basically communicating loud and clear who I am. Uh, and I worked 23 years for a labor union, so that's where I'm coming from. Uh, and I do believe that employees need to be treated with utmost respect and dignity, like all of us should, uh, and we should be paid appropriately and treated appropriately, uh, with respect to everything that we do in the workplace. So I'd say that to all of you, knowing that, for example, the employees that work for me, Joanna Garcia, who's handling the time clock, she's my Chief of Staff, and Erin Rose Collins, uh, is our Policy Director, and so it's important that, that they know that they, that we care for them. With that, I'll turn to my colleague for questions that you may have, Senator.
Thank you. I just want to make a correction, my last name is White.
White.
Everybody gets it wrong, it's, it's quite all right. Um, so we heard this loud and clear, and we're hearing it once again, Tier Six sucks. And it's not just enough to bring that message forward, you have to bring the solutions with it, because it affects each of us differently with wherever we're, um, representing. Um, so it's important to, that you communicate those changes that need to be made, uh, so that we can understand how to make those changes effectively, and do that in a timely fashion to make sure that we're recruiting the best and the brightest into the state, and that we're not losing them because they're going off to live their best life. We want them to live their best life here, working for the state and bringing good services to the state. We have important jobs to do, and I know you all know that. With that, CSEA, I do have a question for you. As you know, I represent Long Island, Nassau County, and Suffolk County. Um, and so I'm just curious, your top priorities for downstate locals, um, and your top priorities for upstate locals, and are they the same?
Yeah, I mean, is, so it's a, it's a great question, but is a statewide union with members that are in, they're in different titles, with different employers, but at the end of the day, the vast majority of our members are public employees, um, and we negotiate contracts for each of them, each, you know, so Town of Brookhaven has a contract and Town, you know, Hunting, I mean, they're all different, and we get into the nitty-gritty, but legislative priorities, we focus on the pension system, which is the same for all of our members statewide, civil service, the civil service system, so employee discipline and, you know, pump and retreat rights, all that very exciting stuff that comes out of civil service. So to answer your question, our, our goals are the same, which is tier equity, increased civil service rights, um, and that goes from, again, that, that goes from Montauk to Buffalo, it's the same across the board.
That's good to hear, thank you. Okay. I have more questions. Um, so of course, I also represent the veterans on our Veterans Committee, um, so I have a question for AFL-CIO, if you don't mind. Um, so sometimes our veterans, when they're separating from service, they experience difficulty porting their military job skills, um, to similar civilian jobs. To what extent is anything being done to, in your opinion, to kind of, um, attract these individuals into unionized jobs, um, to use the skills that they learned in the military to apply to a job that they can assimilate?
Sure, that's a great question. I'll, I'll, um, I'll, I'll say this, one of the programs that we're most proud of comes out of the New York State Building and Construction Trades, Helmets to Hard Hats, where they do just what you're talking about, help, uh, individuals coming out of the military transition those skills into, uh, really good construction-related jobs into the future. Um, so that's one program that we sponsor and support. Um, I can get you in touch with them, and they can give you a lot more specifics, and they're much better equipped than, than I am to talk about that, but it's a program we're very proud of, and, uh, that's the one I would highlight.
I'm glad to hear that, and I appreciate, really, I appreciate what you all do. You bring so many good services to our state, and, um, your dedication to those individuals and those employees really goes a long way, so thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll just add one more plug. It was brought up on the previous panel, anything we can do to help our, um, military, um, veterans coming out to get public service credit and enhance that, and the retirement system is a good idea as well. We have some of that in place, but we can always work on doing more.
Absolutely, thank you.
Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have two questions, maybe Pav and, um, CSEA can help me address this. Thank you for your testimony. Fully agree with our state needs to invest in our publicly, uh, government employee, public employee, and also ensure our work environment is safe and healthy for them to, uh, perform. I was actually, uh, surprised to see we're over, for the overtime is 1.36 billion dollars on those numbers. That's a lot of, uh, overtime, and just wondered, do you, do we have any number to show, like, how many percentage on, uh, staff shortage, or if we translate those, uh, budget, though, how many position we could actually afford in a long run? Because when we pay those, uh, overtime, we're also putting the money there. We could have fulfilled those position, and also that means, uh, our public in general, they're disservice, they need way longer to, uh, receive the reserve they, they entitled to. We're waiting for the overtime here. And also, uh, for the, uh, CSEA, maybe, could you tell us, uh, for the hiring process, it takes four to six months, or could be nine to 12 months, for someone, a candidate who actually applied, uh, have the exam, and then for the canvassing, and the interview, and for hiring at the end? How do we keep qualified candidate to this position if the process take nine to 12 months? How do we, how do we shorten this? What would, what would be the best suggestion from your, like, the members of your, your unions? Is there any way you can give a suggestion?
Right, you can go first.
Sure. So I'll start with the first question. As far as the numbers, I mean, it really varies from agency to agency. Some agencies have a lot more vacancies than others, but if you look at the overtime numbers, you're always gonna see the top agencies that are sort of the most user, users of overtime. So you're talking corrections, all of our 24-hour, Office of Mental Health, Office of People with Disabilities, um, the places where they have to provide services at all shifts, and we don't have enough bodies. Some of those agencies over the last decade, I work for OPW, so I'm most familiar with them, we have lost about 8,000 staff. So we were about 24,000, we're down, we were down to about 16,000, and we're just around 18,000 now. So there has been some hiring. The problem is, what I said earlier, the rates of attrition are so high. So even though we've been hiring in some of these agencies, people are leaving faster than we can bring them in. But as far as like, you know, the overtime cost, I mean, we're talking 157% more in overtime payments than in 2012. So 2020, 2012, the cost of the state, 529 million, which is a lot of money, but now it's 1.36 because of how short we are. I know in some places, we're averaging 50 to 60%. Um, you know, it, there's a lot of different reasons for this. I think part of it is making it difficult for people to volunteer to work overtime. You often have people that are willing, but, you know, there's all sorts of rules and obstacles in the way. Um, this is, this is a result of a cycle of decimation. And, and the problem is, once you get people on, and you make them work overtime and mandate them, then they leave. So it's like this, this vicious cycle.
Just identify yourself when you respond to the question.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, Josh Terry, Civil Service Employees Association. I just want to make one comment on overtime, because we, our members face it drastically too. We can say it's voluntary overtime or mandatory overtime, but very rarely is it true voluntary overtime. And here's, here's an example. If Randy is, she might be getting married next week, and senior, overtime is seniority-based and it trickles down, so I might take it on so that she doesn't have to do it. So that's voluntary overtime, but in reality, it's mandated because we don't have enough staff to cover the shift. So I just, I, I, I don't want us to get bogged down in kind of voluntary, making it sound like people want to do it. Sure, everybody always wanted a little extra overtime, but I think people would rather be at home with their families whenever they can be. Senator Chu, on your question of, of how do we keep candidates around, right, when, when the wait could be this long? I think we've started taking the steps to do that, which is offering these exams much more routinely, so that the lists, I mean, they don't get stale, but we're constantly getting new names on there. Um, and I will say, if we make the pay and the benefits attractive enough, people will, they, it may be tough to keep them for nine months to wait, but people will wait a bit of time for a job that they want to do that has the right pay and benefits. Now, that won't always hold, and we still have to speed up the process. And I will give kudos to, I mean, there's been years I've come up here and I have bashed state agencies to no end for what they've done, but I will give them credit where credit is due. There are, especially OPWDD is trying to hire. I mean, our agencies, I will say, in OMH and OP are trying to hire. They've been given the green light by the, by the, by DOB and the Governor's Office to hire who they can, but they're facing the same headwinds that every other employer in the state is facing. And OP is really, OPW has, at least for the titles that we represent in, you can take a test, you could have a job offer the next day, and you could probably start working a week later. Um, and they've really gotten, they've, they've done really well in that, with implementing that, but we need to find the people. And so that goes back to changing some of our tiers, or the Tier Six benefits that we have, changing pay, work rules, things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Senator?
So my question, and anyone can feel free to answer this, but, you know, we hear this over and over, Tier Six, for all of its flaws and so on, um, and you just made the point for me. So as we, as we move through, and Tier Six is so unattractive, but I hear it over and over again, that anyone who's working in the healthcare field feels the competition with the rise of minimum wage. So I'm curious how you feel minimum wage is impacting making Tier Six look so unattractive, because I've got people who say, I left the healthcare field because I can go work for Target for, and get the same benefits and, and have less stress on me. They feel less rewarded from the work that they're doing when they've got this minimum wage competing with what they're trying to accomplish as a career for their lifetime.
Yeah. I mean, I think the-
Just identify yourself.
Yep, Joshua Terry, CSEA Local 1,000. Increasing minimum wage was something that I think across the board, labor supported. And we think it's important that people work with, and have dignity on their job, and can afford, um, to live a decent life. Um, and I, I think that's a tenet of the, of the AFL-CIO and every union that's a member of it. But it, it has, I mean, we have lost members who have said, I don't want to, I can't do this job anymore, because I can go make, I'll make less money over here, but the stress is less. And a great example of that is for our jobs and our titles that we represent that are covered by the Justice Center. They have an over, a, a, a group that's constantly looking at them, and our members feel harassed by them, so they say, we can leave, like, we will go somewhere else. But I, I think the answer is, again, it is, we need to stay competitive with pay. The state has never been the place, or local governments have never been the place you come to get rich. Like, and our members know that, they don't enter for that. But we've entered kind of a new paradigm in our economy, where the state and local governments and school districts have to look at their compensation packages and make them more attractive. Um, and the compensation package was always, right, three, three parts of it, your salary, the pension, and the health benefits. Um, and we need to make sure that we, we keep, you know, making sure that Tier Six, and that's why I think Tier Six is so much, so talked about, because it is the one thing that we can do that will spread across the whole state to every public employee. The costs are socialized, right? So if we gave every public employee a thousand dollar raise tomorrow, I mean, we would be looking at billions of dollars in costs. But we can increase the benefits under Tier Six for a fraction of that cost, and it's paid overtime. Um, and it's a big, it would be a big driver for recruitment and retention, which is, you know, something we don't focus too much on, but the retention of our current employees who may say, why don't I just leave? And so I think we, we just need to be constantly analyzing the whole package that we offer all of our public employees.
Yeah, I've heard it over and over from people who have been lobbying me and, and saying, you know, listen, we've got people with disabilities who need caregivers, full-time caregivers, and those caregivers have a lot of responsibility and a lot of duties that they've got to take care of, and for the same amount of money, or maybe $2 less, they can go work someplace else with far less stress, far less responsibility, and get the same kind of, um, you know, packages that they enjoy with the state. So it becomes far less attractive. So I'm just curious if minimum wage is really taking away from our ability to recruit the best to go into those fields, because one's 15, one's $18, but they're gonna pick the one that has less stress and gives them more time with their family and less demanding?
Yeah, I don't think the, I think the- Minimum wage increase, which we fully support it, I don't think that's creating competition between the public and private sector. Remember, the, uh, public sector's still largely represented by unions, and also there's benefits in place and, and other, um, other rights and benefits. You know, at the end of the day, uh, the public sector also will adhere to the, uh, to the increases, and as you know, minimum wage is now indexed, and it will go up now more predictably annually, and local governments and businesses will be able to budget for it. I think when you're talking about the competition, there were some discrepancies between fast-food workers and other segments due to wage orders from a few years back, and there was a lot of confusion about minimum wage. But what you're bringing up is, um, you know, the stress and the work and the problems in the public sector, which we've outlined today, yeah, a lot of those don't exist in the private sector. We also brought up, um, other solutions like more flexible, negotiated, flexible work hours. That's much easier to do, you see that more in the private sector. So private sector employers are offering other things like that, on top of all things being equal, if you can avoid stress of a, of a difficult healthcare job, or mental health, or law enforcement position, by taking all other things being equal, if it's minimum wage in the private sector for something less stressful, people are gonna do that, unless the pension benefit is worth it and the health benefits and all those other things.
Thank you.
So I, I have just, uh, two questions, and anyone can answer them. So how does New York State compare to other states as far as salary advancement opportunities, vacancies, timeframes to fill vacancies? Does anybody have any idea?
You know, we've, um, the staffing problems are not unique to New York. All states are having them. It was, uh, it was, uh, started really with the pandemic, or I should say, got exasperated, uh, exacerbated by the pandemic. And the public, uh, private sector also had staffing issues, they're coming out of it a little bit quicker than in the public sector. Um, so you, you're seeing, and I don't, I can get your numbers, Senator, we've seen numbers in other states, and we have some national numbers. I don't have that in my testimony, but we can follow up with your office and get you some more specifics that some of our internationals have put out. So I don't think it's unique to New York. What is unique in New York is we got hit especially hard during the pandemic, we got hit first, and, um, we were way behind in terms of, uh, the safety equipment and, and protocols and other programs to keep our members safe. So coming out of the pandemic, we are just not recovering as quickly as some other areas, partly because of Tier Six, partly because we're not doing enough on safety and health and some of the other things we've identified. But we can follow up with you with some of those national numbers.
Does anyone know, uh, can you make, can you highlight any training programs or things like that, that, uh, we can have for recruitment? Do you know of anything that's working, so that, uh, that can be funded through the budgetary process? And, you know, any ideas? Do you know of anything? It's important, because we're trying to recruit people to come in. And so obviously, by, you know, eliminating exam fees, having exams, uh, continuously going out to BOCs and colleges and high schools, and, you know, where people can actually see these announcements, uh, that's very, very important. But do, does anyone know any programs anywhere that could help us to facilitate the process of making sure that these, uh, 12,500-plus positions are filled?
Well, I think there have been a number of states that have had successful campaigns to recruit their employees and, and public sector workers. A lot of them revolve around branding and public relations, and really doing what we've never done, which is toot our own horns. You know, displaying what public workers actually do in a very comprehensive way. When we go out and talk to people, they're like, oh, what's, what's that acronym? Or what's that? They don't know, the public doesn't know unless we tell them. They really started recognizing it during COVID, but I think a lot of what's outlined in the Public Service Matters campaign that needs to be budgeted for are really, is really a roadmap, to do videos, to do, you know, big advertising campaigns, and get to the right markets. advertising campaigns and get to the right markets. So you go out into rural communities where we're closing a lot of group homes and a lot of different service systems because we can't find staff. Well, part of it is the legacy issue, but we're not getting into the high schools. We're not getting into programs where people are young and just getting out, creating apprenticeships, creating job trainings, building the supports around student assistant programs. I mean, I'm old, so I used to, I remember when we had on campus, on state campuses, we had affiliations with nursing schools, where they did their rounds into state government agencies, and then they got credit towards that. So I think there's a lot of models, some of them are historical, and some of them we're seeing in other states where it's really robust campaigns on things that people my age don't use, the social media, the Instagrams, the outreach in varying ways. But I think a lot of that has been talked about, it just needs to be budgeted for.
Okay. Thank you. So first, let me thank you all for coming in, giving testimony on behalf of your unions and organizations. We're going to take a break before we get to panel three, and that will be returning at 1:25 PM. So take a five, 10-minute break, if you don't mind. Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
So good afternoon, we're back. And now we're going to listen to AMC, the New York State Office of Management Confidential Employees. So welcome this afternoon. You are panel number three, I think. Yes.
Thank you, Senator. Senator, I, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you and discuss issues around recruitment and retention of the state workforce. Tell me if I need to sit up higher and--
Sure. Just pull your mic a little closer to you, if you can pull it up.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's great.
Good? Okay. So there's been a lot discussed this morning and this afternoon, most of which I had planned to talk about, but I'm going to not do that because you've heard, almost, almost all there is to say, I think. We agree with much of what was said already in terms of workplace issues and how things are going. I will focus on issues particular to the MC employees. I guess I'm supposed to introduce myself. I am the president of the Organization of New York State Management Confidential Employees. We represent, as the name implies, the management confidential employees of the, who are state Our membership, which means somebody is paying us dues, does not constitute the full range of 10,000 MC employees. I would love it to be the case, but, and we keep working at it, but we're not there yet. With me today is Heath Morris, who is our new executive director. And this is learning experience for him. We're trying to get him--
Day 120.
This is the first of one of these kinds of events that we've been to together. So let me start with the recently imposed spending freeze and recently announced hiring freeze. So I think it would be great if we had the opportunity to look at the agency budget requests, which I believe are due today, to see what they're looking for for next year's budget, given spending and hiring freeze and the general, what conditions we expect for next, for next budget year. How are we going to satisfactorily address our staffing needs, which have been discussed quite a bit this morning, given that we are looking at both a spending and a hiring freeze? But that's, that's the open question. I don't have the answer to that for you today. So the, last year's Workforce Management Report indicated that we had 9,771 MC employees in the state workforce. I found out just this morning that we actually now have 10,249 as of today, which means that some new folks have come on the roles or have been promoted from PAF or CSCE positions and are now in MC. But this report also indicated that there was a potential shortage of candidates for management positions, which basically means PAF positions, that there aren't enough PAF positions to staff and be promoted into the MC positions, which is not something that we, we have to deal with all the time. But anyway, what, I'm sorry, but let me, let me go on, because the more important issue that I have is that agencies, now, let me, let me back up. I'm sorry, let me back up. MC employees want to be treated with fairness and equity and know less well than their colleagues. In our efforts to accomplish such treatment for them, and because we are prohibited by the Taylor Law from engaging in collective bargaining, we turn to legislation as a vehicle to obtain change. We have four bills that we have been supporting, and we thank Senator Jackson because he is the sponsor on our bills. And we believe that these are important to meet the needs and desires of the MC employees. The first one is representation of state employees who are MC, and this bill provides that AMC is deemed as the sole organization that's certified or recognized for such representation purposes. The second one would require that when there is a hearing officer recommendation as a result of a disciplinary procedure, that that hearing officer recommendation is final and binding, not subject to change or modification. What happens on occasion, or more than occasionally, is that an agency that gets a hearing officer recommendation can choose whether or not to implement that recommendation. And in some cases, they decide they really don't care what the hearing officer said, and they're going to impose a stricter penalty on the individual. And so we've had a lengthy process and an expensive process, basically for naught, because they're not paying attention to the recommendation. The third bill would ensure that MCs would be treated equitably as with PAF and CSCE-represented employees relative to the percentage of salary increases, performance advance adjustments, and other longevity lump sum payments. We have been making progress on this, and the salary increases that are projected for next year and the year after are consistent with what CSCE got in their contract and PAF has in their contact, in their contract. This has not always been the case, and we believe that statutory provisions would be helpful. And then we have a bill which would provide for retiree parity payments, and this would help people who retired way back between 2009 and 2015, after salary increases had been withheld. And when salary increases were reinstituted in 2015, those who retired between 2009 and 2015 got nothing. And so we have a small payment that we think they should get, just in recognition of what they lost those many years ago. So the representation bill and the hearing officer decision bills have no fiscal implications. The comparable pay and benefits obviously would have, and the retiree parity would have a fiscal impact of approximately eight to nine million dollars. But we believe that comparable treatment for MCs and parity with the other folks in the, in the workplace promotes our ability to recruit and our ability to retain employees. Issues that would affect this, this include hostile work environment, which you have heard about earlier today, and we agree that that does exist in many agencies. Employees who've been working from home post-COVID, objecting to returning to the workplace, which now is happening with increasing frequency. And we find increasing numbers of discrimination and human rights complaints, and in some ways, as a result, requests for reasonable accommodation. People are not, they don't want to be back in the workplace, so they request an accommodation on that. We support, and this has been discussed earlier, continuation of flexible work schedules. We would support telecommuting, which I know is being phased out, but we think it should be continued. And staffing so that both the reasonable accommodation requests can be dealt with properly, and all of the other workplace issues that we all face can be addressed quickly and fully. And so we come to the issue, and it appears that people have forgotten how to get along with and work with others as a result of being out of the workforce. So I heard the discussion earlier about bullying, harassment, and discrimination. We find our members and MC employees who come to us as well talk about these issues. And I know that there is a bill, and we're reviewing that bill again to see whether or not we're going to be supportive of that particular piece of legislation. But definitely, we think that the issues of bullying and harassment need to be addressed by all of us working together. And I looked at the Equal Opportunity Handbook the other day for harassment, bullying, and to see what has been already produced and is out there. And one of the, one of the things that I found that interested me was that appropriate supervision is not harassment, based on, on the Equal Opportunity Handbook, that normal supervision, such as enforcing productivity requirements, requiring competent job performance, issuing disciplinary warnings or notices, is not considered harassment unless it's particularly targeted to somebody and the person is treated in truly a discriminatory manner. So we need to take those claims seriously, we do need to evaluate them, and we want to be absolutely sure that employees are trained and appropriately supervised. There are three issues around agencies seeking classification of positions in the exempt, mostly, and non-competitive class. We think these, there are three negative impacts related to that. It ignores the constitutional requirement of a merit system based on competitive examination. Exempt positions may be paid without regard to the statutory compensation schedule. And they may lack civil service job protection and obviously union representation, which would not be consistent with the intent of the Taylor Law is. So I had some examples, they're outlined in the written testimony. I just will add up by saying, we're a strong supporter of the constitutional requirement of merit and fitness through competitive examinations. And we also support the use of methodologies such as improvements in technology, faster testing and scoring, continuous recruitment, expanded use of training and experience evaluation. But we do believe in testing for qualifications for positions that we're going to fill. We understand and appreciate the staffing challenges that state agencies face. We believe that broader and more inclusive discussions of how to meet these challenges is appropriate and in order. We appreciate the governors and the legislature's commitment, and obviously to you, to revitalizing the state workforce. We thank you for considering our concerns, and we look forward to being your partner in this process.
Well, thank you. Let me thank you, Barbara, for coming in as the president of the Organization of New York State Management Confidential Employees. My, I guess my question is, how is the relationship of AMC with respect to working relationship as management confidential employees with the governor and her executive teams? If any.
We don't have a real relationship. We do talk to the folks at OER--
Mm-hmm. OER, the Office--
Office Employee Relations--
Okay.
--to Michael Valforte, the director, and Linda Scalzo, the assistant director--
Right.
--who has responsibility for MC affairs. And we do have, I would say, we have a good relationship with them. We have a meeting scheduled, I believe it's next month, and we've tried to have regularly scheduled meetings on a periodic basis so we can talk about issues. But just last week, I had a discussion with, with Linda Scalzo, who's the assistant director for MC affairs. So we don't have a relationship specifically with governors, staff.
The Office of Employee Relations--
It's done through--
OER.
It's done through OER.
So are they aware of, obviously, you've heard, I believe you heard the panelists, the panels before you, is that correct, as far as pension, as far as work schedule, as far as promotions, and how long it takes to recruit someone?
We, I mean, we don't have any objection to anything that they said. We don't get, our, our members, and we talk mostly to our members, which means we're not talking to the complete MC workforce. Although we have, frequently, we have people who are not members who call and have a problem that they need our help with, and they become members. And we're happy to, to assist them. But the, if they're coming to us with a problem, they really are focused on that problem, and can we, whatever it is, whether it's a disciplinary issue, or they need advice on how to navigate their issues in the, in the workplace, or whatever it may be. And it, it, sometimes that's their focus, and that's all that they want to hear about. They don't want to go beyond that at that, at that point.
But that's good that they, they are utilizing either someone communicated with them to go talk to AMC about issue or concern, and then they come to you.
Yes, yes.
When I say to you, to the organization structure, obviously, you've, you've been very much involved for, for many years, to the best of my knowledge.
I have been, yes.
So obviously, you have a wealth of knowledge and information as how to handle certain things appropriately, and I'm sure you're advising them to the best of your knowledge under circumstances.
And we are fortunate, we have a small staff. We do have folks who we call our representatives, who work with an individual who comes to us with a problem. And I think without exception, all of those, we have about seven or eight of them scattered around the state now, all of them have prior state experience in human resources or labor relations. And our coordinator is somebody who, Senator, you know well, who is a former executive director of ours. director of ours and does a really good job at dealing with tough issues. Sometimes, issues that our representatives have exhausted their abilities to deal with. And sometimes, it's just, he may be the only one that's available at a particular point in time to deal with. But we do spend a great deal of energy and time in providing that representation service. And what has happened over time, there are some agencies that now, when they give a letter to an individual who they're referring, I would say, are putting in the letter to them announcing that they're going to be interrogated or subject to investigation, you may wish to contact AMC to assist you in representation. So that's progress, as far as we're concerned, but it's not standardized across all agencies.
I think that that's good progress, knowing that someone may receive a letter saying they may be interrogated about something and make a reference to, you should, you may want to contact AMC for assistance. Even though you're not a recognized labor union.
Right.
But you're, as an organization, as an association, that's dealing with the employees that are entitled that are considered MC.
Mm-hmm.
That's important.
Mm-hmm. Oh, we're pleased with that.
Yeah.
But we need to continue to work on it so that we have all of the agencies at that position.
Now, I have your packet of information, and it seems pretty heavy compared to the other testimony, so.
That's because we have a number of attachments that we thought, we thought, rather than simply make a statement that, all right, there's an agency that was requesting, sorry, 15 special assistant positions put in the exempt class. They already have 29 of them. And we looked at, I said, what in the world is going on here? And when we looked at what they had submitted, looked to us, like, the description of what the jobs were going to be clearly could have been put, and we thought should be, in the competitive class. There was nothing that was outstanding. There was nothing that indicated that the job could not be tested for. Not necessarily paper and pencil testing, but we have a number of other kinds of testing instruments that are being used. So we didn't want to just make the statement. We thought it would be useful for you to see what the agency requested, to see our response, and understand why we were taking the position that we're taking. I mean, there was another attachment in there. This was for the Office of Disability Determinations at Temporary Disability Assistance. Way back, way back, when I was working for the state, I did happen to work in that office for a number of years, so I have some familiarity with it. But they were asking for assistant commissioner positions to be in the exempt class, except that they said, under saying assistant commissioner, they said director of operations. So why are you asking for exempt class when most of the positions are in the competitive But that's why you have a heavy package, that we wanted to provide you the background information, because it tells a story.
Okay. So Heath, you're new.
Yeah.
But you're in the mix of things, which is a good thing.
Very much so, very much so. I'm learning a lot from Barb. Barb and I spend a lot of time with each other on a daily basis.
That's good.
First thing in the morning, first thing in the morning, he's in, and I come in, and he's anxious to talk to me.
That's good.
And, but it's one of the best ways to learn.
Yeah.
Because I have been around for a long time, and I've gone through a whole series of kinds of different issues and had to deal with them.
Return to Senator Weck.
Yeah, mentor process is the most valuable thing we have, and so that's why we want to make sure that we can see that in our government and throughout our state. And again, that's one of the important parts of looking at all of our civil service jobs is to make sure that we do have a positive and a mentor opportunity, because you're lucky to have it. So many of the jobs just don't have that. I do have one question. I'm just concerned, I'm wondering if you're concerned that the governor will increase the retiree healthcare benefit cost sharing, because I know that's a big issue.
It's, yeah, we just got something. We just got a new regulatory thing on PBM.
Yep.
Stuff which we have not had a chance to thoroughly review. But any increase in costs is of a concern. So I haven't seen any announcement yet that that's coming, but we will have, obviously have something to say when it does. And actually, there's a rate renewal hearing today, I believe, on the NISHIP health insurance costs, but we're here.
I'm fully confident you'll keep track of all of it.
Yes. Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, do you?
No, but I thank you very much for your testimony and for your time for being here. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. We thank you for listening to us and paying attention.
Well, not only listening, but I'm going to look at more details of the documents that you sent. And the staff also, obviously.
Will contact us for additional information.
Well, it's important that all of us work together.
I agree.
On behalf of the employees of the state of New York. Whether or not they're in PFC, SCA, or in the other ones, or even MC, you know. In unity, there is strength, and hopefully, we'll be able to talk to one another and work with one another for the benefit of the employees that we serve.
We agree.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. And Heath, congratulations.
Thank you.
Look forward to communicating with you and our team.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right. Hi, Erin Rose. So next, we're going to move to panel four, the New York State School Board Association, the Board of Cooperative Education Services of New York, BOSI's, the New York Libraries Association, and State University of New York, known as SUNY. So please come on down, make yourself at home, to the extent possible. And I think we're going to go with the order in which it was called. Is that okay with you? Not unless someone has. Hi, everyone. How you doing?
Good.
That's good there. I'm doing good, thank you. So I just ask you to, obviously, state your name, your title, and your organization, or your advocacy group, in order to move forward. Okay? Is that all right? So let's start off with the New York State School Board Association.
That'd be me.
That's better for you, Brian.
Yeah. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Brian Fessler, and I'm the Director of Governmental Relations for the New York State School Boards Association. I want to thank you, Senator Jackson, and the entire committee for holding this hearing today and inviting us to testify on this important topic. We appreciate the opportunity to offer comments on behalf of the 670 member school boards that we serve. Staffing shortages have had an enormous impact on all public sector employers, and our school districts and BOSI's have been no exception to that. Most notably for schools, as you heard, New York is expected to need more than 100,000 new teachers over the course of the next decade. The shortage of teachers is especially challenging in high-need subjects, in special education, for students of color, and in rural areas. But staffing challenges exist beyond the instructional classroom roles. We have consistently heard from our members of the need to fill key positions such as bus drivers, school nurses, and other non-instructional staff. This widespread staffing shortage has been set against the backdrop of the growing need to support the social and emotional well-being of our students. Perhaps the most pressing example of this growing need for mental, is the growing need for mental health professionals, which has increased exponentially in the wake of the pandemic. While statutory reforms are important, resources continue to be a critical part of our response. So I want to express our continued and sincere thanks to you, your colleagues in the legislature, and the governor for the commitment to achieve full funding of foundation aid. These resources have helped us manage many of these challenges so far. So thank you. Going forward, we believe that one of the most effective ways to address the shortage of qualified employees is with the civil service process itself. NISBA, along with several other statewide organizations, including the Libraries Association, sent a letter to the governor last year outlining several of these proposed changes. First, there should be a number of updates made to the exam process itself. The state should adopt a standard for civil service grading metrics. These metrics should be understandable and predictable, and the content should be derived from professionals in the field. Next, the provisional appointment process, it needs reform. If a test is not offered within nine months after an individual is provisionally appointed to a position, we believe an employee should be able to be made permanent. Conversely, if an exam is offered within nine months, a person in the provisional appointment should be scored as pass/fail on that exam. Third, part-time positions should be non-competitive by operation of law instead of local rule. Recruitment of part-time staff is increasingly difficult. Complex testing and hiring procedures can frequently result in potential candidates choosing not to pursue those part-time jobs, particularly when there are ample part-time opportunities in the private sector. Fourth, an electronic canvassing process, we believe, would simplify the current paper-based canvassing process by allowing for email and/or phone contact in lieu of mailing letters. Finally, we should seek to expand, where we seek to expand, the number of eligible employees for appointments to a list of five rather than the current rule of three. That current rule of three unnecessarily limits the number of eligible potential employees and reduces the competitiveness of the position. We also note the current temporary waiver of the income cap for retired public employees to return to the public workforce. For the past few years, this has allowed recent retirees to fill critical roles within our districts and BOSI's. The waiver is currently set to expire June 30, 2024. We have heard from our members, as we have over the past couple of years, that this continues to be an important tool, especially in the short term, and we support another one-year extension of that waiver. Beyond these specific proposed reforms, NISBA has also supported proposals aimed at enhancing and embracing diversity of the education workforce. We recognize that both teaching and non-instructional workforce positions must continue to diversify so that students are exposed to role models of different races and backgrounds, and district-wide decisions are made with the consideration of various viewpoints. We appreciate your collective attention to these important issues, and we look forward to our continued work together to support our schools in responding to these challenges. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak before you today.
Thank you. Who's next? It is the Board of Cooperative Education Services of NY, BOSI's.
Thank you, Senator Jackson. Thank you, Senator Weck, like, excuse me, and Senator White, excuse me. Thanks for the opportunity to be here with you today. I agree with everything my colleague from New York State School Boards just said. I'm Dan White, district superintendent from Monroe One BOSI's, representing the 37 Boards of Cooperative Educational Services in New York State and the over 700 school districts that we serve. You have our written information. I don't want to be redundant to a lot of the things you heard today. I'd like to point out a couple of salient things and then move on from my other colleagues. In regards to the testing system, Mr. Fessler talked a little bit about some reforms. I want to point out a couple of things that we know in education, and that is, no student is a test score or a number, and frankly, no adult should be as well. And I think while it may be constitutionally not permissible to eliminate competitive exams, it certainly needs an eye to look at it for a couple of different things. One is relevancy to the job that they are taking the test for. And number two, cultural competence is very important as well. If those two things don't exist in any examination, whether it's in our area or whether it is in competitive civil service exams, those exams cease to be a bridge to opportunity. They become exclusionary, and that is not something that any of us want. So I think it's very important that while we're looking at the structure and the logistics of the exams, we look at them themselves, both when we're looking at initial hiring and also the important promotional examinations that can exist. Number two, I do want to point out that BOSI's are very heavy users of civil service employees. It's not unusual to have 60% to 70% of Board of Cooperative Educational Service employees be civil service as opposed to instructional or certificated. That is because of the nature of the work that we do with a lot of back office, financial and technical services that we provide to school districts. So we are very well-versed in using civil service systems. There is differences in those systems across counties. While municipalities do not cross-county lines, school districts and Boards of Cooperative Educational Services do, and we are often dealing with multiple different iterations of civil service regulations that go from county to county that can become problematic and frankly, can become confusing to employees as they try and navigate all of those processes. That can also be a barrier to retention. Some positive things I want to point out to you, we've been able to partner with our county civil service on a number of different things, including trying to advertise and promote the exams that are out there. That's important. Oftentimes, you may talk to prospective employees, and they may not know that a civil service exam exists for this. And so promotion of this is certainly very, very important. Using up-to-date social media, et cetera, can be very helpful. Again, it's important that we take a look at these exams themselves. I want to make one note on Tier Six, because you've heard a lot about that today. One of the concerns we certainly have in public education, as Mr. Fessler pointed out, is hiring. In my 20 years as a superintendent, district superintendent, I've never seen hiring like this in education, even for certificated positions, which often had not been the issue. So part of our issue is hiring, kind of priming that pump to get prospective employees into the system. But the second one is retention, and I think as we look toward the future, we have to look at all of our benefits packages from an eye not only hiring, but retention as well. And I think you've heard from a lot of the groups today that there's concerns as employees move forward in the system. How does their tiering of retirement play into their ability to persist in our profession as well? As we know, you've seen a lot of data on teachers leaving the profession. There's a number of different reasons for that. But as we try to address compensation, certainly looking at what's down the road for them in their pension system is also important. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And next is the New York Libraries Association.
Yes, hello. My name is Max Prime. I have the privilege of serving the New York Library Association as their Director of Government Relations and Advocacy. I just want to thank the committee. Thank you, Chair Jackson, and thank you, Senator White, for bringing us together to talk about these issues. And thank you for providing me with the opportunity to testify today on behalf of our state's libraries, library systems, and the dedicated professionals who operate them. In New York, employees of municipal, school district, and special district public libraries, as well as public academic and school libraries, are public employees subject to civil service law. And just to express that quantitatively, that means about 388 of New York's 755 public libraries, so over 50% are civil service. So really, they're dependent on the efficacy and the efficiency of state, county, municipal civil service to be able to operate effectively. And as such, enduring institutional barriers within current law and practices can sometimes constitute substantial obstacles to success in those pursuits for a large portion of our state's library community. While our community sincerely thanks the members of the legislature and Governor Hochul for improvements to civil service law advanced during this year's legislative session, including those articulated in chapters 55, 356, and 358 of the laws of 2023, areas for improvement still remain. And working with legislative partners and also allies at external organizations, like some of the partners to my left here, as was mentioned earlier, we are seeking further amendments to processes and protocols within civil service for the field of librarianship. And these amendments are also out. And these amendments are also outlined in the 2022 letter to Governor Hochul that Nyla joined with six other impacted organizations, including the School Boards Association. And so I'd just like to take a moment to kind of outline what those were. Some of them will sound familiar because they were already hit on by my colleagues, but I'll try to be brief. The first is continued expansion of continuous recruitment. Building on the expanded permissibility of continuous recruitment outlined in Chapter 55, establishment of continuing eligible lists should not only be permitted where civil service departments or municipal commission find appropriate to do so, but required where possible. In instances where continuous recruitment is not possible, exams should be offered no less frequently than every two years regardless of the status of existing lists. Regular exam schedules damage the recruitment efforts of libraries and other employers by reducing the number of potential candidates that are available for a permanent appointment, and it really pushes libraries to rely on provisional appointments to fill those positions. As was touched on before, those provisional appointments, while they are a useful tool for alleviating kind of the immediate need to get staff on board, they're really not great tools for attracting people to the profession because they are not, they don't offer the stability of actually being able to get that permanent appointment. And they also just create kind of inherent uncertainty for the library itself when it comes time to eventually have that test taken, you know, sometimes due to some other issues. The person who has been working there in a provisional capacity ends up scoring at a level that is not reachable on the list, and then they've put in sometimes years of work without having a test, and then they aren't able to stay on when they've developed those skills and that institutional knowledge over that time. So really, offering tests on a continuous basis increases test visibility for potential candidates and helps ensure viable lists and make sure that those lists are for people who are still currently seeking positions. For point number two, we have standard grading metrics. And essentially, a public standard across all counties, municipalities should be established for civil service grading metrics. And as was said by my colleague before me, these metrics should be understandable and predictable for our members who are taking those tests. Candidates frequently take the same test in multiple jurisdictions, and the candidates taking the same exam can receive different scores in different jurisdictions. And that's particularly concerning on skills assessments and surveys that are kind of talking about one's experience. Somebody can write that they have the same experience and give the same data to different jurisdictions and receive different results when they get their scores back, despite having the exact same answers in that, which creates confusion for the candidates. They don't really know why that happens, and it really disincentivizes candidates from exploring other areas of the state that they might be looking at that might already have a hard time recruiting for those positions. If you're trying to attract people there, really, you need to just reduce the confusion as much as possible to bring them to you. The third point I have is to modernize exam content from the field, and individuals from a given profession should be provided with the opportunity to offer input on the content of experience in multiple-choice exams for titles specific to their industry. Test takers and employers in the library field consistently note that the subject matter of multiple-choice exams is outdated and sometimes irrelevant for assessing the skills needed for the positions that they are taking the tests for. For libraries, this manifests in questions sometimes about systems and technology that aren't in use anymore, like card catalogs, whereas the people who are coming out of library school with the newest and freshest information, you know, they might not be even quite as versed on those old technologies, and it's just not reflective of what those hiring are looking for in the positions. And with respect to the content of the experience exam side of things, those experience surveys, really, one thing that we see is kind of weighting things towards people who have already been in the field for a long time, which we understand. But for something like a librarian-one position, that is an entry-level position, we find people who are coming out of library school sometimes struggle to be reachable on the list with their scores because the scores prioritize the postmaster's experience. And so the person coming out of library school doesn't have the postmaster's experience in a library yet, and so they don't have the, really, the supplemental points to get bumped up to higher on the list, and so they're not reachable, and so they struggle to just get that foot in the door for a job. Really, we would just like to see subject experts from the field regularly engaged to increase the relevance of the questions and to assess necessary skills. Our fourth point is transitioning from provisional to permanent appointment. If a test is not offered within nine months after an individual is provisionally appointed to a position, an employee's appointment should be made permanent. If an exam is offered within nine months, a person in the provision appointment should be scored as a pass/fail on that exam. And this speaks to what we were talking about before with if you don't have that continuous recruitment. If you have long gaps between when the tests are offered and you're hiring provisionally a lot, you really want to retain that person as much as possible because they do have that really valuable institutional knowledge, and especially if they are there and they are proving themselves through their work that they can do that job. We certainly see the value in still having the test as much as possible, but if the test is not offered within a reasonable amount of time, we would love to see them become a permanent appointment. And then if it is offered, we'd love to see it pass/fail so that they are easily reachable there on the list. And really, the fifth point that we have here is for part-time positions. Part-time positions, those less than 25 hours per week, we would like to see non-competitive by operation of law instead of the local rule. Recruitment of part-time staff is essential to libraries, as it is for many industries who by necessity operate outside of traditional eight-hour daytime shifts, and it is, as was mentioned by those who have presented before me, an increasingly difficult task. I have heard from libraries in a survey that we did of the communities statewide that really when they're sending out those canvas letters for the part-time positions, they're having a heck of a time getting interest and response back. There was one library, I believe in Nassau County, that had lost between the end of '22 and beginning of 2020 about seven part-time clerks. They sent hundreds of canvas letters, and they got back minimal results. And there was another, I believe, also in Nassau County who was hiring for a part-time clerk, who I believe they sent out 50 canvas letters and got back one person who was interested in the part-time position. So we're really just trying to entice people to these positions, to our libraries, to be able to staff them appropriately because we do need those part-time positions, and we are certainly struggling with kind of how things are on the, in the current system to get that to happen. Our sixth point is for electronic canvassing. We would like to simplify the list canvassing process by allowing for across-the-board email and phone contact in lieu of mailing letters. My colleagues, again, have already spoken to this, but we'd like to expand on the Chapter 358's work to improve systems for exam announcements and getting those out into the field, and allow for email and phone canvassing for the actual positions. And we believe it would create significant reduction in hiring times and reduce the ongoing organizational impacts of the unfilled positions and just the cost of sending out, you know, maybe hundreds of letters to canvas for a position and unfortunately just not getting that many people responding back. And so sending out via the methods that people are really checking more regularly, their emails, their phones, would certainly be very helpful in doing that. And our seventh point is to expand the number of eligible employees for appointment to a rule of five. That was already spoken to before me. And just one last point to very briefly hit, beyond individual reforms to civil service, Nyla advocates for the amendment of retirement and social security law to allow participation of free association libraries in New York State and the local retirement employees' retirement system. Currently, only a limited number of association libraries are able to participate in the state retirement system, and those were done kind of on an individual basis through actions of legislation. These libraries, though they're association libraries, are subject to the same rules to state chartered that everybody else has to follow, but the lack of access to the state retirement system has been a real hit on the recruitment and retention efforts that they have. There is currently a bill before the committee right now that is S. 4245 from Senator Palumbo that we support, and the New York Library Association thanks you for your time and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, SUNY is in the House, State University of New York.
Thank you. It's on. You can just call. Good afternoon. Senator Jackson.
Beth, you're going to have to bring that mic a little closer so people, everyone here in the room can hear you. Thank you.
All right. Better?
A little better.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
I'm Beth Berlin, the Chief Operating Officer of the State University of New York. On behalf of Chancellor John B. King Jr. and the Board of Trustees, I appreciate the opportunity to participate in today's public hearing. SUNY recognizes the groundbreaking legacy of our civil service throughout state history as well as the important role that civil service employees have within our system. We applaud the efforts you are making alongside Governor Hochul and Senate and Assembly partners to consider strategies to first eliminate barriers and strengthen New York State's civil service workforce. Thank you. Our classified service employees currently represent 26% of our overall workforce at SUNY's 29 state-operated campuses. These employees perform critical roles in the administration, maintenance, health, and safety of our students, faculty, staff, patients, and facilities. In analyzing data from the past 10 years, SUNY's overall civil service workforce remained relatively stable between 2014 and 2019. Unfortunately, the COVID-19 pandemic exasperated hurdles that exist within the system. Since 2019, the civil service workforce at SUNY has become slightly more diverse, but the overall size has declined by nearly 10%.
Thank you.
And let there be light. It is important to note that the percentage of decline is driven in many ways by campuses' current inability to identify more eligible candidates or fill vacant positions quickly. The ways that people pursue employment have changed dramatically in recent years, but the current civil service process has not kept up. For example, private competitors and even many local governments are able to offer higher salaries, sign-on bonuses, and on-the-spot hiring at job fairs or through continuous recruitment. Further, knowing that employees expect the hiring process to be simple and move quickly, New York's current process is instead viewed by applicants as cumbersome and time-consuming in comparison. I'm going to share a couple examples of how the lack of exams and candidate lists has affected hiring at SUNY. One of our state campuses has not been able to fill many titles, including the titles of dispatchers, security services assistant one. An exam for the latter title was held on March 4th, and the list made available July. As of today, no eligible individuals remain on either list. The counties nearest to the campus have eliminated exams for these same titles, and as a result, the campus has approximately 10 vacancies for these two titles that they cannot fill. Another campus has 10 vacancies for office assistant one, 10 vacancies for office assistant two, six administrative assistant one positions, six university police and security specialist positions, and two supervising janitor vacancies. After canvassing the list, campuses ended with no one to interview. SUNY respectfully advances the following potential solutions for consideration. Expand the existing help program to include additional entry-level titles. This may include the titles of office assistant, security services assistant, and other similar positions that are not in the healthcare field. Review all current titles to determine if an exam continues to be necessary for the position, and if not, move more positions, particularly entry-level ones, to a non-competitive Eliminate, where possible, testing requirements for positions similar to what is already occurring at local and county agencies. Require continuous recruitment exams for in-demand positions for which applications are accepted on a continuous basis, and therefore, a constantly updated and changing eligibility list is To ensure a full and diverse workforce in every region, we suggest exams that are deemed essential should be held in locations that are easily accessible, based upon traditional traffic patterns and public transit routes. For individuals in areas not easily accessible, which includes many of our SUNY campuses, there should be the ability to take the test online in the same way that the DMV allows for permit tests. Exams should be scored, and lists should be made available to agencies and campuses within 30 days. Specifically for police titles, allow for a transfer from other police agencies without having to take a specific university police exam. Eliminate the current five-day lag pay policy. Many employees, especially entry-level, cannot afford to have one day's worth of pay withheld every paycheck for their first 10 weeks on the job. Similarly, the lag between the start date and an employee's first paycheck should be reduced. Employees cannot get to work if they cannot afford transit. We all agree the current civil service structure must be modernized to meet current and future workforce needs. To that end, we are grateful to Governor Hochul, to you, Senator Jackson, state legislators, Office of Employee Relations, our labor partners, and so many more for the actions you have taken, the ideas that you have raised, and the opportunities that you have offered for potential solutions. And I too would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Well, first, let me thank all of you for coming in, giving your testimony. And in listening to all of you and previous panels, panelists, you clearly have an issue and concern about recruitment, retention, and a lot of other things relating to keeping good employees. I guess my question is, we're hearing it here today in this hearing, and you're also submitting your testimony, but have you, and I'm not saying you, each one of you, tried to put this in writing and give it to your agency heads and what have you, or the Department of Civil Service before today? And that's the question that I have. What have you done to try to address these issues internally before coming in front of a legislative hearing?
Senator Jackson, I'll share with you at SUNY, we have--
Just mention your name before you begin.
Of course. I'm Beth Berlin, Chief Operating Officer from SUNY. We have a very good working relationship with the Civil Service Department. We meet with them on a regular basis. We work with them through priorities. I think some of what we're identifying and some of the solutions that we're offering are, sit outside any one entity's boundaries, and we're very appreciative of, you know, the opportunity to continue to pursue those administrative efficiencies and streamlines and exemptions that are made, but we do think that there is an opportunity, as you've identified, for a broader conversation.
Anyone else in response?
Sure.
Brian?
Yeah, sorry. Brian Fessler, State School Boards Association. You know, you heard a lot of similarity between, you know, our points and the Libraries Association's points in particular. You know, as I mentioned in my testimony, a number of our groups, including Libraries Association, school boards, the Council of School Superintendents, Association of Business Officials, Association of Counties, Conference of Mayors, and the Association of Towns, all of our kind of municipal employer-type groups, sent a letter to the governor roughly around this time last year, so kind of leading up to the executive budget proposal, outlining a series of six, seven, eight points around the civil service process that you heard here today. You know, we were supportive of some of the, you know, we were supportive of ultimately some of those pieces around the edges that were included in the budget around continuous recruitment, et cetera, that, you know, maybe if we're being optimistic, perhaps we're spurred by some of the conversations of our groups. You know, certainly, we think a lot more should be done, but that's why we're pleased to see that you're hosting this hearing and the opportunity to testify today, you know, to continue that conversation and dialogue to hopefully, you know, move some of these proposals and recommendations along further, you know, because certainly, I think we all agree, these challenges at a minimum remain, but more likely continue to grow over time.
Certainly. And Dan White, Monroe One BOCs. In addition to the things that have been said, we-- we participated in a number of those statewide opportunities to provide information on these things. I think there's space also. We have worked with our county, local county civil service as well to address things like barriers, residency barriers, to being able to take examinations if you live two miles outside of that county line or something like that. And we have gotten some responsiveness from that. So I think it's important that we're all working locally as well, which I think, Senator Jackson, is your point, right? What else are you doing besides showing up here? I think that's, it is important. They are still bound by some of those, you know, statewide regulatory things. But there has been some progress on those, on that end.
I mean, geographical boundaries, you know, is it because the county or municipality have to pick up a cost, or what?
I think it is to provide those opportunities first for their county residents. And in our joint letter of educational entities that was joined by towns and other municipalities in Monroe County, stipulated that we don't have enough candidates right now within our county. And so, we're trying to work within the current guidelines that we have to certainly rectify. I also think, going back to better advertising, we can do a better job of that, of these examination opportunities and how you access them, et cetera. I think it's really important for a potential employee base as well.
But based on what I've heard, all of the people that testified today, it's not like you have 1,000 people waiting to take exam in a county or what have you and so forth, you know. So, come on. We need more flexibility in order to try to move the system the way it should be moving in order to make sure that we're filling these positions that people want to work. I mean, we have so many asylum seekers, so many--
Correct.
--migrants that are looking to get their certificate of employment so that they can go find a job, you know what I mean?
Correct.
To support their families. And there's so many things that were said by this panel and previous panels that we collectively, at the state level, should be moving on instead of procrastinating, you know, in my opinion.
Senator Jack, there's tremendous opportunity for employment bases. We all live in systems, and if the system is frustrating sometimes and intimidating to us, then we think about the folks that don't live and work in systems every day and how that looks to them, and that is certainly a barrier. So thank you for saying that.
Yeah, I clearly know exactly what you're talking about. The campaign for fiscal equity versus the state of New York took 30 years to get full funding for--
Right.
--Foundation A, and that's terrible. There's hundreds of thousands and millions of students that have not had the opportunity for asylum basic education. And we all have to take responsibility for that. And so, we just stand up and push back the system to do what's right on behalf of the constituents that we represent. Let me thank you all for coming in. Let me turn to my colleague, Senator White.
I just thank you so much for your testimony. And I've heard it from, I'm a big supporter of my libraries. Not ashamed to say that I think our libraries are probably more important than our schools because they're there from birth till death, where our schools are traditionally there K through 12 and then for higher ed. So our libraries are incredibly valuable. Our BOSI services are incredibly valuable. And I have been listening to my library say that they've got qualified individuals who live in a different county, and then they can't keep that person after they've trained them and nurtured them, and then they're unable to retain that individual because they can't get that cooperation from civil service. So that's an important thing that I've been trying to work on as well. So I'm glad that you brought that up because it's an important topic. I've also heard different titles, titles within our school district don't coincide with the same compensation with our titles in our BOSI programs, for example, the nurses and that kind of thing.
Correct.
And that's something that we want to make sure that we're coordinating with civil service so that we can not only recruit, but maintain in all of our opportunities for education. So thank you for bringing those up. Those are important points.
Thank you.
I've been informed that we have a new law providing notification of tests includes a way for any group or agency to electronically sign up for those notifications. You're all aware of that, right? And that we are expecting written testimony from other employer groups who could not attend in person to testify. You heard me say earlier that, you know, please don't wait. Give us your written testimony so that we can have that, read it, and analyze that, and we will-- okay? And let me see. Okay. Do you have any ideas other about partnership and recruitment? And if you do, you could think about that, and even now, if you can just express it. And if not, you want to think about it and submit it in writing because we're always looking for opportunities to partner with one another as far as recruitment and retention, and the cost of the programs, and, you know, you would need to expand. If you have that, if you don't have it, that's fine. But if you have it, and if you send that to us so we can look at all of the options and trying to work, you know, within the system in order to make the changes that we have to do. I don't have any other questions at this moment. So, we are expecting, we will break for lunch and return at 3:20 for our final two panels. And let me just say this to all of you. As you know, Tim Hoag, who is the President of the Civil Service Committee, he's going to be testifying, I believe, next when we come back. So it would be good to hear what he has to say--
Absolutely.
--if you have the time to stay and listen. Okay? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. Just hopefully, if you've been here all day long, you got something to eat or drink. So first, let me just say to the Commissioner of the New York State Department of Civil Service, Timothy Hoag, let me thank you for coming in.
Yes, sir.
I know you're a busy person, obviously, but this is a very, very important issue for all of the employees of the state of New York. So we thank you for having you.
Thank you.
And knowing that, for example, that you were a guest speaker at PEF's, I think, Executive Board meeting--
Yes, yes.
And then you stayed in order to open up for questions. And when you said that, the lines went--
The lines went crazy.
Which showed your willingness to listen to what people have to say. And let me just say, they appreciated you, and so did I, with your openness. And knowing that, for example, that this subject matter, as far as the over 12,000 vacancies that the state has, anything we can do collectively to help fill these jobs with qualified individuals and reduce the timeframes, takes, and everything like that, there's so many parts to it. But I look forward to, as the Chair of Civil Service and Pension, and working with you and everyone else--
Yes.
--to help speed up the process so people that are qualified can get a job and start working, and their benefits will be one that they can be proud of and acceptable to them. And not, for example, some of the testimony we heard today where several jobs were listed, and people applied, and wind up, no one, you know, it took so long that people found other employment because people have to survive.
Yes.
And if anything, in my opinion, based on the conversations I've had with you, we have survived the situations in New York State. Obviously, you in Buffalo and me in New York.
Yeah.
That just goes to your testament of being a part of a team for our governor in order to get the job done.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to be here before this distinguished body.
So that's, before you begin--
Yes.
Commissioner, this is Alexis White. She is a state senator from Long Island, parts of Nassau and Suffolk County.
Awesome.
And she's the ranking on this committee, and other members are not here. Ewan Chu was here earlier from Brooklyn. And obviously, you've met Joanna, my staff, and Erin Rose Collins is our Policy Director, and Amanda, and Chris are attorneys working with Central PEF. They helped us to where we are today.
Awesome.
So let me thank you.
Awesome.
So with that, the floor is yours. I look forward to hearing you and whatever you have to say about what's happening with the Department of Civil Service. What have you done? And what are you looking for down the road with you and your staff that are here? So let me thank them for coming and being with you.
Yes. Yeah, I have an awesome staff.
That's good.
Awesome. Sometimes they don't trust what I might say, so that's why-- that's why they come.
That's my staff also.
Yeah. They tap me on my show. I can feel their eyes looking at me now. But Senator, I would like to offer the same thing I offered to Senator Jackson, to come to your district and educate individuals, understand what the makeup is and some of the questions that they have. I know Senator Jackson and I, we are looking to do a job fair, and the Department of Civil Service is all for that, working at the ground level to get the word out. So that is an open invitation. If you so choose to take it up, we will be there. We will be there, so. I know it's been a long day. I will, I know you have my testimony, but I will go through it briefly, and then we can have any dialogue or questions that you may have. So, good afternoon, Chair Jackson and distinguished members of the Standing Committee on Civil Service and Pension. My name is Timothy Hoag, and it is my privilege to serve as Commissioner for the Department of Civil Service and the President of the Civil Service Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you to highlight our efforts to recruit and retain a talented, diverse, and dedicated workforce that serves all New Yorkers. During my time as Commissioner, I've been struck by the dedication and unwavering commitment of New York's public workforce. However, New York's workforce over recent years has experienced a reduction in size that requires a creative and coordinated approach to remedy. Fortunately, in addition to having a dedicated workforce, the state of New York employs innovative and talented individuals and think critically about our processes and integrate stakeholder feedback into our strategic approach to address the modern challenge we face. To help build the public workforce, the Department of Civil Service has been doing just that, taking many proactive steps to modernize and remove barriers to employment for all job seekers. When I presented my budget testimony earlier this year, the department was in the beginning stages of implementing the Hiring for Emergency Limited Placement, or HELP, program to address the statewide workforce shortage in critical health and safety titles. The HELP program temporarily waives the civil service exam requirement for approximately 100 direct care titles and health and safety titles across New York State. It's a program that, for a 12-month period, individuals will be allowed to enter into state government that meet the minimum qualifications. This also allows agencies to hire-- that process that you mentioned, the hiring process, to drastically reduce the time it takes to bring individuals into state government. In addition, recognizing that local governments are having the same challenges, the department implemented a similar program, the Local Help Program, to provide a tool for local civil service agencies to address the emergency staffing crises that they also experience. I am pleased to report that, to date, more than 3,700 positions have been filled through the State Help Program across New York State. And this number will continue to grow due to the expansion of the program. And at the local level, there are currently 26 local civil service agencies participating, and more than 500 positions have been filled to date. While the COVID-19 pandemic severely limited the department's testing program, our ability to hold examinations, much progress has been made. We recently surpassed our pre-pandemic testing capacity and have also produced more eligible lists this year than the previous year, important steps that continue to help our agency partners in bolstering their workforce. In addition, the department is making examinations more efficient and convenient for candidates by holding more online examinations that measure candidates' training and experience because life, work, experience matter. For example, for the first time ever, we offered the professional career opportunities as an online exam. Last year, it reached more than 20,000 job seekers. Further, the department continues to engage with agency partners to implement pay increases and salary differentials for a variety of titles to improve recruitment and retention efforts. As part of these efforts, the department completed a major restructuring of nursing titles last year that resulted in upgrades for most titles and higher starting salaries and salary differentials. I know that's a big one for you, yes. Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. The department has also worked with the Division of Budget to implement salary differentials for dentists, nurse practitioners, plant utility engineers, disability review psychologists, body repair inspectors, and automotive facility inspectors. Not only is the department delivering new programs and rolling out more exams to meet the state's needs for filling critical jobs, but we're also doing more than ever to reach job seekers where they are. The department has attended more than 200 outreach events, engaging more than 32,000 attendees across New York State, engaged with more than 27,000 constituents across social media channels, and hosted more than 3 million visitors to our website, and have conducted paid social media campaigns for several programs. We are also engaging with community partners to expand our reach to help spread the word about the value of public service careers. While we're making great progress, we obviously have more to do. For the first time in many years, thanks to the leadership of Governor Hochul and the support of our elected officials, we are now making investments to improve and reimagine the civil service process. First, we are developing our Continuous Recruitment Examination Program, which will better serve New Yorkers and make both state and local examinations more accessible and convenient for all. Rather than offering exam once every couple of years, we will be offering exams both online and in person on a continuous basis. We are establishing 12 state-operated computer-based testing centers. Centers where in-person exams will be held six days a week. Dedicated testing centers will be located in all 10 regions of the state, with two centers being located here in Albany and New York City. The department is currently securing test site locations in the Capital Region, New York City, Central New York, the Finger Lakes, and Western New York, with plans for these sites to open in late 2024. Additional sites will be located in the other regions across the state to provide all New Yorkers with the ability to participate in exams, including individuals who do not have access to computer or Wi-Fi services. This paradigm shift in the testing program will make testing more accessible in all New York State to become more competitive in our recruitment efforts with the private sector. In addition to holding exams more frequently, this year's budget removed exam fee for state civil service exams through December 2025 to promote equitable access to careers in government. And we know that's important, as we had that discussion at the PEF conference there. As you know, civil service exams fees can serve as a barrier to entering public service, particularly for candidates from traditionally marginalized communities. We are also doing more than ever to promote these exams widely to ensure we reach a diverse audience by working with an array of community-based partners and institutions of higher education to share timely exam information with their communities. And we build on these partnerships when we establish a presence at the DOL Career Centers throughout New York State to meet job seekers where they are and serve as a direct link to educational institutions, community-based organizations, and others. In addition, we are developing a public awareness campaign to communicate the values of public service, the benefits of employment with New York State, and the diverse opportunities available across state government. We have also worked closely with Kim Hill, our state's first Chief Disability Officer, to increase job opportunities in the state for people with disabilities. This year's budget strengthened the governor's 55B program by raising the program threshold by 500 positions. This significantly increases job opportunities for individuals with disabilities. And I know this is what you're waiting on. We are undertaking a comprehensive study to modernize the civil service pay structure, which dates back to the 1950s. We will develop an evaluation system that will review the statewide civil service structure for all job titles to ensure they meet the needs of employers, align with the current job market, consider pay title equity, and level the playing field with the private sector. We will be releasing a procurement to find a vendor to conduct the study shortly. We are also reviewing the educational degree requirements for a variety of titles to determine if they are truly necessary as a minimum qualification to participate in examination. Top of mind of all the efforts the department undertakes is ensuring that diversity, inclusion, and equal opportunity are at the forefront of all statewide initiatives. Under Governor Hochul's guidance and leadership, and in partnership with the state's Chief Diversity Officer, Chief Disability Officer, and each individual agency, the department is committed-- Chief Disability Officer, and each individual agency, the department is committed to building and sustaining a workforce and advancing programs and services that reflect the many unique faces, voices, backgrounds, and ideas of those we serve. Together, this robust, this robust package I have highlighted will help us eliminate barriers to entry for civil service jobs, meet job seekers where they are, and attract and retain a pipeline of new diverse talent into the workforce. While civil service will be leading the way in these efforts, we cannot do this alone. We need all of you, our partners across government, to join us on this effort to make New York State an employer of choice for all New Yorkers. I look forward to working in partnership with all of you to bring this vision to fruition. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today, and I, I will answer any questions or take any comments that you may have at this time.
Well, first, let me thank you and your team for coming in this afternoon, put it on your schedule to come and give testimony. We had several panels earlier today. You may have had staff here, you may not have, but for example, the first panel was the Police Benevolent Association of New York State, the Police Conference of New York, the New York State Correction Officers and Police Benevolent Association, NSCOB, the New York State Professional Firefighters Association, the New York State Public Employees Conference, PEC. That was Panel One, and Panel Two, and Three, we've had several leaders representing even the OMC, the Office of Management of Confidential Association, they say they're not a union, but they are there representing the MC employees, especially when it comes to questions and concerns. There's experienced people that have been involved, representing MC employees, management confidential, so. And a lot of the comments that they made, I asked the question of a panel was, okay, many of you are mentioning the same type of things that are not happening in order to recruit, retain, move forward employees. What have you done? Have you gone to your agencies? Have you gone to whoever in order to try to get it in? In essence, know what the issue is, let's focus on trying to resolve it. And, and so, and the answer is that basically they said that they're trying, but they need more of a vehicle. And in my opinion, you as a Commissioner and as a President of Civil Service Commission and your staff are the vehicle in order to get this done. Because many of the issues are regarding recruitment, retention, promotions, pension, all of the things that people are interested in. And from my having discussions with you as far as your background, where area you live in Buffalo, and working with the people there, I just hope and expect that you are the type of work, worker, commissioner, president of the Civil Service Commission that we need in order to focus and hopefully be able to make everlasting changes in the system to best meet the needs of the people in a more timely manner. I think there was compliments on the governor and her team last year in transitioning from a 10-year vesting to a five-year vesting, and people know that is a major, major victory for everyone. Not just one individual, but for all of us. And also for people to know that, that if you serve at least five years in the system, and if you happen to leave for betterment or for whatever, at least whenever that person retires, down the road, maybe 10, 20, 30 years from now, they have a little bit.
Right.
And if you add a lot of little bits together, you have a whole lot, a handful. But, so, I'm so happy that you're here. I got, I got a couple of just questions. Do you know, and if you don't know, if you can get back to me whenever you can, by waiving the examination fees, how much money is being saved overall in the system by doing that?
So, we're not actually saving dollars by waiving the examinations fees. We estimated that it was approximately $3 million that the, that the agency would be foregoing in fees that we collect. But we know it's directionally right to, to do that, to broaden the candidate pool. And so, we understand that is, that is important, and we have the support of the governor, and so that, that's what we're doing. It's till 2025, and we're going to look and, and see, see the impact as it has, and hopefully more individuals will, along with our continuous recruitment efforts and some other stuff, along with the, the testing sites that we have, that we will have across the state, hopefully a more diverse candidate pool will participate in our examination process. And hopefully that will turn into individuals in representation in the state workforce. And not only at the lower levels, but all throughout state service.
So, when you made reference to, in essence, increase the diversity in, in the state workforce.
Yes, yeah. And so, we talk about representation at all levels, but we have to be able to bring individuals in in order for them to be able to progress through, throughout the, the stage of their career. So, we're really excited about all the initiatives that we, that I presented here. And working with individuals across the state, like I said, as we've had conversations a few times, that we, we don't have all the answers, but we appreciate the conversation from individuals that I consider my customers. And so, the more we get out and talk to the public, the more we go throughout the state, the more we talk to our partners in organized labor, the more we talk to the agencies and localities, we get to understand the problems and the issues that they're facing, and we get a lot of suggested solutions, and we can, we have the time, we, we dialogue about what might work, what might not work, and we can try some things. Because it's important, as you mentioned, we have, we have a lot of vacancies in state government right now that we need to fill, and they're critical positions.
Well, I, I appreciate what you're saying, because with respects to, you know, all of the testimony that we receive verbally today and in writing, we're going to sift through that and pull out the recommendations and make sure, and if, for example, that you and your team gets that, to make sure it's some of the same ones that you're hearing out there, you know, because it's not like it's a miracle. It's basically people putting forward their suggestions based on their environment that they're, they're working in.
Yes, yes.
But here's a question, what statutory barriers, if any, exist to increasing testing up to the date of the list creation?
I'm not sure if I.
Yeah, so with, with regional testing locations opening, for example, if, if there's continuous recruitment, how many or what barriers exist while coming up to the dateline of, of establishing a list?
So, so with continuous recruitment, that will, you probably heard agencies or localities talk about a stale list. So, the list has expired and is no longer applicable, and they, they have no candidates to, to pull from. With continuous recruitment, that will eliminate that, and so you will, you pretty much always have a, an eligible list to pull from.
And so, when an agency would need someone, it is go to the continuing list?
So, so that our staff are looking at those, those titles that are like frequent flyers that we really need to test on a frequent basis, and we're doing that type of, we're looking at that as far as our schedule. As we start out, we, there'll probably be some adjustments that we need to make, but ideally, there will be, there will always be that fresh eligible list for individuals to, to be able to pull from. So, that's why going from this, this, this once every few year model to testing six days a week is, is important. And we know that sometimes candidates have, have told us that we, we just can't make it on that Saturday or Sunday. So, with, with this, with this new model, we are, we are making it more available and more efficient for individuals to be able to participate. And it's a win-win for, for the individual and, and the agencies, because we are testing more frequently.
Have you heard of, we've heard some testimony that instead of, you know, mailing a letter to me saying, yes, you're on this list, to use technology emails, are you're doing that already and communicating with people instead of?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the stale mail, yes, yes, we are, we are being more efficient using technology where, where we're able to.
Yeah, and I, I was glad to hear the number of employees within, under your jurisdiction has increased since you've been there.
Yes, will take more if you're willing to.
What numbers are those, if you don't mind?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
What numbers are those now as far as under your jurisdiction compared to when you first came?
So, we'll be, we'll be, this last budget cycle gave us roughly 150 individuals that increased, and part of it is due to the continuous recruitment and all the stuff that we're doing across the state. So, they won't necessarily be here in Albany, but they will be across the state doing a lot of great things. Reaching out into the communities, doing the outreach, that type of stuff, the career centers, the testing centers. So, yeah, we're excited. We, we know that, we know that it's tough sometimes as far as a budget tier item, as, as far as when we're asking for individuals, but this is the first time in a while that the Department of Civil Service has been, has been given the opportunity to increase our staffing. And like I said, we're excited about it, and we're going to work our behinds off to make sure that this thing is successful.
As far as, I know that you're going to be sending notices out to SUNY campuses and schools and high schools and all, and BOCs and everything like that, that's all electronic. It's up to them to, for example, then communicate that it's available on their website or to print some out and have them so that people can access that, is that correct?
So, yes, we, hopefully, we, hopefully they understand their population the best. We get them the information and they, they can present it in whatever format makes sense. But also, like I said, with us having individuals at career centers, they will be able to get out into those communities and do that type of outreach. Something that we learned working with the Chief Disability Officer, Kim Hill Ridley, is that we need to rethink how we are presenting materials to make sure that they are accessible to individuals with disabilities. Both our website, our, our social media, our printed media, and so we are really taking a, a look at how we do that as well.
Do your work centers around the state, are those all up and running right now?
No, so that was a part of this most recent budget that passed. We're in the process of posting positions and interviews and getting that up and going. We, we have a great team that has been out scouting locations with the DL, with the Department of Labor, and they have been a great partner throughout this entire thing. And so, like I said, we're excited about the progress that we're making and the, the footprint we're going to have across the state.
Okay, if, if we have any suggestions in our geographic areas as to appropriate place for a work center, should we just?
You could reach out.
Send it out?
You could reach out.
To your staff?
Yeah, you could reach out, we'll have that discussion. We, we've learned a lot, we've done a lot of site visits. And like I said, DOL has been a great partner in this whole thing in advising where we should be, where we shouldn't be, and so, yeah.
Let me turn to my colleague Alexis White for comments, questions.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony, it's so nice to have you here today.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. First, you just kind of touched on it, but we're talking about civil service employment for disabled persons and, and disabled veterans. Of these 1,755B slots, how many of the current slots, disabled of course, are filled? And how many of the 555C disabled veterans are currently filled? Do you know that information?
Offhand, roughly of the 55B, there are 1,172, I believe. The 55C we have struggled on, and I, I don't have that number offhand, we can get that to you though.
What are some of the barriers you're seeing?
55B, we had to come and ask for increase, so we, we've seen the participation with our partner agencies increasing. So, we're, we're excited about that. The 55C has continued to lag, and we're trying to figure out what that might be, what, what is causing that. And so, once again, as far as the career fairs and listening fairs and that type of stuff, we're committed to going out and, and doing that, working with, once again, Kim Hill Ridley, the Chief Disability Officer, and accessing that community through some of her connections, and also working with Commissioner Veterans Affairs to, to see how we can make this match. There's some blockage, I think, and I don't know exactly what it is. It could be the stigma, it could be, could be our process is just not conducive to veterans, disabled veterans. And so, those are the things that we've tasked ourselves to, to look at and, and see, why aren't they accessing? Is, is there, is there education that's needed on the side of agencies and that type of stuff? So, I love problem solving and asking why, people get tired of me asking why, but that, that's what I do. And so, we're going to continue to try and, and work and figure that out. And so, once again, it's really talking to that customer base and, and saying, hey, what, why don't you, why haven't you, why don't you? What was the issue? And then really trying to take that input and implement new initiatives and strategies.
Do you think the governor is intending on increasing the 55C slots as well, or do you think it's going to stay where it is?
So, we really need to, we need to perform and get more individuals in, and so, once that happens, I think we can have that discussion.
Good to know. Okay, I'm going to switch gears if you don't mind. I have the great honor of being able to represent a municipal-sponsored airport, Long Island MacArthur Airport, which is in Islip, my lifelong residence. So, I know that you've been talking to representatives in the New York Aviation Management Association, also Syracuse Hancock International Airport, and some of the other airport officials have been in contact with your office regarding the difficulty and of my own airport, Long Island MacArthur, that we're having with hiring and promoting under the civil service law. The solution, I'm told, would be to allow these airports to hire on a permanent basis instead of provisionally as currently required. The Senate acted on legislation this session sponsored by Senator Mannion to address this problem for Syracuse Airport, but that's all it addressed. The other legislation has been introduced that would apply to municipal airports statewide, which would certainly benefit even my airport. Are you familiar with this issue at, at many of the municipal-sponsored airports in New York? And could this change, could there be a change that if pursued by your department could be handled without legislation? Is there something that you can do to allow us, because these titles are really detailed, and it's difficult to get these individuals in?
So, I'm familiar with the Syracuse Airport issue that they were having, and it was, it was, it was a bunch of different layers that, that was impacting that. Some was the lack of testing being available, and so we were able to handle that through another vehicle. But I am, I'm more than open with my staff to, to having a meeting and, and getting details on, on what it is. If it's, if it's specific to the individual airport, or if it's, if it's a common type of thing that is happening, let's get together and start having that dialogue and, and see what, what might be available through the Civil Service Commission or legislation if need be.
Sounds great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner, as far as your Department of Civil Service, your website, is it totally up to speed with respects to everything? I don't know, I haven't been there, but I can see.
Our website could, could, could use some, some work.
Okay.
And so, it's not, as it stands right now, we, we're committed to improving it. As it stands right now, it's, it's not the easiest website to navigate. And so, we know that we lose individuals when you get on and have to start clicking, clicking, clicking. And JP back there, he, he's probably smiling behind me right now. Him and his team are really going to, to work to make sure that we get a website that is accessible and, and easy and makes sense. I think that's one of the biggest things that I'm trying to do as a Commissioner of Civil Services, do things that make sense and, and that are simple and that are easy to understand. And so, civil service law doesn't have to be so complicated, navigating the civil service process doesn't have to be that complicated, and accessing our website shouldn't be that complicated either.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, and so, I'm going to look at it myself, and I'm not the.
Please provide feedback. That's all right, you, you are, you, you are who we want, right? We want you to navigate that, right? And so, when, when we think about it, I had a, have a conversation with a friend of mine. And so, when, when we think about it, I had a, have a conversation with a friend of mine a few, few weeks ago, and we were talking. He's, he's a Chief Information Officer for National Fuel, and he's like, hey, we have to make things simple like this. He said, individuals that are young and individuals that are seasoned can really use, utilize a smartphone and navigate that. So why can't we apply that same type of thinking to our website and systems? And so that was the challenge that I took in having that conversation, because that's how individuals are accessing information, right? And so if it becomes too difficult, we, we give up and say, all right. And so we don't know what type of barriers we are setting just because our websites are difficult to navigate. I won't say what I said at, at the PEF thing, but they're difficult to navigate.
This question here I asked earlier of one of the panel, I don't know which one, but I'm going to ask it of you and your team. And if, can, have you looked at other states and their system there and compare it to ours? How we can improve or, or realize that we may be behind other states? I don't, I don't know. I'm asking the question for us to look at overall.
So our, our team continuously benchmarks and looks at what other states, what other areas are doing. Myself and our Chief Disability Officer, Kim Hill-Ritley, and Director Nicole Keith from my office, we recently attended a interstate, a conference of states in Colorado where it was, I believe it was Mississippi, New Hampshire. Colorado was present. There was a couple other. That we were talking specifically about public service recruitment and retention. And so we were able to present what we're doing here in New York and then also glean from them and some of the best practices that, that they were doing. And believe it or not, we are all having similar type issues. Most of the, the states were doing a review of their, their jobs and pay structure. They either were going into it, had just finished, or about to, to start it. One of the things that really came out was looking at the different cohorts of age groups that, that, that are possibly going to be the dominant ones in the workforce, and figuring out how do we really speak to that, that generation. It talked about social media and being intentional about how you utilize that tool to, to reach out to individuals. And it also talked about onboarding and respecting your employees and your individuals and what that process looks like. And it, it really boiled down to be, to make sure that we are communicating effectively and efficiently, that we are respecting individuals, and that we are, that we are receiving that feedback and making the appropriate adjustments to the system. And so, so to, to, to answer your question, yes, we, we do benchmark and look at best practices across the country.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in. We appreciate your statements and also responding to any questions that we may put forward to you and your team. And we look forward to working with you to improve the outcomes overall for not only you as a Commissioner and as the President of Civil Service Commission, but for the entire state of New York. Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, team up there. And next, we're going to hear from E.J. McMahon, founding senior fellow at the Empire Center for Public Policy, Inc. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, Senator Jackson, Senator White. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today.
Yes, come on down. You're here. You're good.
Come on down. I'm here. I'm going to, there've been a lot of interesting points here today, made today. I'm not going to go in, I'm going to focus on a particular area, but I did want to say, I think you've heard a lot of worthwhile, provocative and interesting ideas, many of them involving operational managerial and administrative changes that make a lot of sense, I think, from all of the previous witnesses. And I think that, and as you kind of indicated earlier, Senator Jackson, I think it would be really good if this committee assembled the best of them and kind of presented a report on them, because they, a lot of overdue ideas seem to be obviously needing to be done, and they're just kind of laying, they're not threaded together as you've, so. As you said, I'm E.J. McMahon. I'm a founding senior fellow of the Empire Center for Public Policy. The Empire Center is a nonprofit, nonpartisan policy research organization based here in Albany. So my focus is going to be on another aspect that was raised by many of your earlier speakers in particular, which was pensions, retirement benefits, and how they impact recruitment and retention. Haven't brought a T-shirt with me. Mine would not, would have a different message, suffice to say. But I'll get into my...
I can see it right now.
It would be, it would, it wouldn't be as pithy, but it would have a different point. On the bigger point, and I think a few speakers have mentioned this, this issue of, of workforce retention and recruitment has been a growing concern, not just in state government in New York, not just in the public sector. It's been across sectors. And, and while it was complicated by the pandemic, it didn't start with the pandemic. It's actually rooted in a trend that was predictable starting 15, 20 years ago. And that's the aging out of the baby boom generation, the people born between 1946 and 1964. And now, that's had a very huge impact, because also, except for the millennial generation is equally as large, but you're going to have, and particularly here in New York, you have a smaller workforce that you're trying to attract to jobs that you still need filled, obviously. And there's other tensions involved in that, obviously. I would say the good news is that that aging out process is just about over, or it's on the, it's on the downside now. It's, it peaked already. And I think we have statistics to support that. If you look at the Civil Service Department's statistics, that there's projected to be this year about just under 15,000 people reaching retirement eligible age within the next five years. That's down from over 16,000 a year earlier, and the number was over nearly 27,000 10 years ago.
And the retirement age, the retirement age you make reference to, 65?
I mean, no, no, I mean what the state, the tier four retirement age that would affect those who are going to reach it. So those who are, those who are going to be eligible to reach the tier four retirement age are going to be, there's, that the number has been dropping steadily and is a lot smaller than it was 10 years ago. Also, this is somewhat contrary to something you were told earlier, but the Civil Service Department reports that there's been little change in attrition rates for the past 20 years. That in fact, in 2022, attrition was down 4% from the previous year. So the attrition rate was 12.4%, a little over a third of that was retirements. You wouldn't have had as many retirements in that same period of time if you were not allowing people to retire as early as 55, by the way, which is another issue. Now, the pension fund statistics reflect that. You're going to, for the first time ever this year, there are as many, there's actually slightly more retirees in the system, collecting and beneficiaries than there are active members in it and mostly contributing to it. That's the first.
And you're referring to the New York State retirement system?
The New York State and local retirement system.
And local, okay.
Right, the, the whole Nizlars picture, that is, the controller is the soul trustee. There's a similar trend, if not a bit more advanced, in the, I think in the teachers' system. However, the, the good news is, however, though, that the system, despite that, remains very well financed. And that's been, that's a product of good management and also a, a product of other changes that we've made. And I'm going to talk about an issue that nobody has touched on when they talk about tier six, which, and, and other pension changes, which is cost. Between 2000 and 2010, total combined state and local pension costs in New York, and I'm including New York City, went from just under $1 billion to $10 billion in those 10 years.
Under $1 billion to $10?
Under $1 billion. $1 billion included a, a sort of a, a artificial low in New York City. But for instance, they never, all combined, state, local governments, New York City combined, never were above $5 billion. They were actually more about $4 billion in the mid-1990s. They, they were $1 billion in 2000. By 2010, they were $10 billion. They went as high as $17 billion in 2015. They have leveled off at 16 in recent years, but they're headed up again. In fact, to make up for last year's investment losses, Controller DeNapoli just announced a pretty big, significant increase in the pension contribution rates for the next two years. Now that's, that's him being responsible and continuing his policy of good management. That's going to cost the state $500 million next year. In fact, the Budget Division says that the state's budget costs, pension costs are going to continue going up by another billion or so in the two years after that. The city separately, with its five systems and it separately managed, their costs have gone up a lot. They've gone up $500 million this year over last, and they're projected to go up another $1.2 billion by 2027. And of course, their benefit structures and costs are shaped by the legislation you do here, so that's why it's relevant. They would be considerably higher if it was not for tier six. Tier six and tier five combined have saved, state and local taxpayers, in this case, I'm not including New York City because it's a harder number to get to, have saved a combined total of well over $1 billion. That means if you reverse them, it would cost you a combined total of well over $1 billion, mounting into multiple billions within a few years. These were significant savings, and yet in pension costs that nonetheless remain very high and will remain high for some time to come. So the cost of having well-funded pensions is not insignificant. Now, yes, tier five and six introduced changes, some of which were a reversion to the tier four of 1983. They were not, they were simply a return to what had been originally legislated. And there were reductions in benefit levels and increases in retirement ages. But nonetheless, retirement pension benefits for post-2012 state employees are far more generous than those available to the relatively few private sector workers who have any defined benefit pension. By the way, I'm not even going to talk about retiree health insurance and supplementing Medicare, which virtually at this point, no one entering the workforce can look forward to, no one. And we, that's not even been mentioned. One in five private workers has any access to any DB plan nationally, so that's a little bit of perspective. So you're recruiting from a pool of people who are looking at both the private and public sector. There's a short, the, the value of the DB model is clear. If you work long enough, and it's a bias in favor of long-term employees, if you work long enough, you get a secure, steady income flow backed by the state constitution, which means the taxpayers. That's the obvious benefit. The disadvantages for the, for the public is that we underwrite the guarantee in back of that, and is, the cost can be, can be both volatile and obscure. But that's the cost of that system. If you choose that system, that's what it is. However, there's also another kind of plan, and that's a defined contribution plan. And here, you've got an advantage. This is the good news of tier six, which no one has mentioned. Tier six created something called the Voluntary Defined Contribution Plan, which was essentially an adaptation of the SUNY optional plan. It's been offered by SUNY, very similar to other state higher ed systems, and CUNY since 1964, and historically has been chosen by the vast majority of SUNY faculty, who are, I just note in passing, members of the same union as public school teachers. That plan is, is compared to the general, the typical 401K plan, which run by different rules that are not as advantageous to workers, is a, is a really good plan. I kind of summed, I have details in my testimony on why. By the way, what's the retirement age under the VDC plan? There is no retirement age. The, the main age to be conscious of is 59 and a half, because if you draw from it after 59 and a half, there's no IRS penalty. If you draw before then, there is an IRS penalty. Other than that, it's what have you saved? It's built around annuities, which are meant to produce an income flow. It's been chosen by nearly 4,700 people since 2013, of whom 4,300 are currently on public payrolls. Why the smaller number? Because the plan was limited to people who are not covered, in jobs covered by unions, who make more than $75,000 a year. Those were the only people who could choose this plan, and there's been a pretty good take-up rate. I would point out, by the way, amongst state agencies, the AG's office has the most, with 367, including nearly a third of the Assistant Attorney Generals on the payroll last year chose this plan. There's a lot of other agencies, a lot of specialty occupations and higher degree requiring occupations that choose this. By the way, there's 58 state legislative staff, at the most recent count, who chose it, and 21 state legislators since 2013 have opted into the plan.
You continue that, that shows not to go in, in the pension system, but because they were earning more than $75,000?
Among your cohort of legislative staffers making more than $75,000, which is a subset of the total, 53, 58 of them chose, since only the ones hired since 2013 opted into this, 15 assembly members and seven senators have opted into it.
I'm one of the senators.
Have you, are you in it?
No, I'm not in it because I, I have a city pension.
Right, that's it. Right. In other words, there's 21 legislators in it. That's only 10% of the legislators. But if you, if you narrow it to the cohort of legislators elected since 2013 who were not like you already in the system, that's a pretty high take-up rate. So, which is fine. That's great. It's, they have a choice. Why shouldn't others have that choice? You're talking about a, you're talking about a generation of workers you're trying to attract to public employment who change jobs more often, who like flexibility and choice, particularly in some occupations more than others. Why not offer the choice? It's a very well-funded plan. I'll get into the details if you want. My recommendation is, if you want to approve, improve the appeal, broaden the VDC plan to a much wider scope of workers, to virtually everybody. They have a choice between that and the defined benefit plan. Increase the funded level. It's actually got a good employer contribution by private sector standards and by some other state-defined contribution plans. It's got a good, it's got the same employee contribution levels and 8% from the state and the local governments. I'd say, do, mirror the SUNY plan and increase that to 10% for people who are in for more than, who, who, once they've hit seven years. That's a very good, very solid retirement plan. And I think that by expanding access to the, what's called the VDC is a way to, to significantly improve the attractiveness of the state and local governments as a place where, particularly for teachers. I haven't yet heard an explanation of why public school teachers in New York should not have the same pension choices as, as college faculty. I would point out to you that in, in Florida, 20 years ago, they began offering it as an option in Florida. There was a Harvard study done. Over the first five years it was in effect, roughly, I think roughly a third or 30% of the newly hired teachers took it, particularly in math and science fields. And you can kind of guess, those are the people you may want to get in mid-career who have had some technical training or, or expertise. So I think this is a good thing. If I get it, I'll wrap up very quickly. One thing, of all the different ideas you've heard off the pension subject, and I'm not getting into police and fire, which is a whole different set of issues, this issue of like clearly the pay lag on the state level is complete, is indefensible, and you could end it tomorrow at no cost, because it's only got a prospective cost. It was a budget money-saving gimmick invented in the late 80s and then repeated and expanded. I can even have living memory of it, speaking of baby boomers. It's, it's just in, to, to try to recruit somebody who you're competing with and then tell them, by the way, you won't get paid for a month and a half possibly. That's, clearly you should end that process.
Was it because, I'm sorry, was it because the, the state was in trouble at that point in time?
Yes. The state was in such duress that in order, like, like they were saving relatively small amounts of money. They were grabbing for change under the couch cushions. And for a relatively small amount of money, even in present standards, they were saying, nobody, we're going to, we're going to, it was basically like deferring a cost. So people hired in like 1990, it deferred until, you know, 2010, the cost of paying some guy who was hired in 1990. Now, he got basically severance pay at a higher pay rate. That was for him. But you're, you're, you're in a much more competitive job market now, as we've discussed. To tell people you've got, you're trying to attract a state worker, to tell them that, by the way, you won't be paid right away, I mean, that's, to me, is ridiculous. But a lot of interesting issues were raised. I don't, obviously, I don't agree with the criticism of tier six. And I, I, by the way, I don't think anyone presented any evidence, like in the form of, say, a survey or anything, that a 28-year-old man or woman applying, who might be up for a job and attractive to, to recruit for a job in New York state government, is going to halt at the door and say, wait a minute, how come there's no retirement at 55? Or, you know, why do, you know, or some other question about tier six. So that's my, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Well, first, let me thank you for coming in and putting forward all of, basically, you were here most of the day?
Yes, I think I heard just about everybody, yes.
That's good. Obviously, I thought your comments were very, very good, and I appreciate those, and I think many other people here. But you're part of helping us to refocus about what we're doing and how we're doing it. And hopefully, everyone in the state is viewed the same way and make decisions that best suits their needs. Do you know what I mean? So I thank you. First time I, I'm hearing you give testimony, and obviously you were taking your notes and, and paying attention.
Yeah, they're all over the place.
[laughing]
But thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Senator?
Thank you so much for your testimony and for being here and for your objective comments. So with that, I'm just curious, what would you change to make Tier Six more attractive? What do you think is really the hang-up that's making people not want to come to work for the state?
Well, I think, let's put it this way. There was a very good survey done by an outfit that was, used to be, it has a different name now that it used to, was a, a think tank for the city and state county managers and County Manager Association nationally. They did a nationally represented survey a few years ago. They, actually, they release one every year. And they said, what is attractive to you about government employment, of government employees? It was meant to be a cross-section. There were a total of 18 different things mentioned. Retirement benefits were six and quite a bit less. What, what was it? Things we kind of know from our own experience, if we've lived life, are the attractions. Job security was number one. Surprise, surprise. Health benefits, we know the state offers very good, a very good health package. And it's really, there's still very few private employers who compete. It had life, lifestyle. In other words, that while there, we've heard from about a lot of hourly employees who have overtime demands. Generally, it's a more predictable lifestyle than, not that you don't work as hard, but the point is there's set hours, there's all these rules. But those are the appeals of government employment. And I mean, I know some people personally who can make more in the private sector, who for family reasons and they're part of a couple, a working couple, the person says, I like this, I'll do, I'm not starving, I'll do this for the state of New York. It's, it's a good, you know, it's a good deal. So that's why people choose, that was the reasons that were advanced. The, I just don't think anybody's advanced any evidence that younger people, and again, the average age of incoming employees is 34, are all that conscious of what their retirement benefits will be in their early 60s. I mean, maybe I'm unusual. I wasn't. And I'm not saying, that doesn't mean, frankly, too often that means you have a cheap, short-changing pension plan. And by the time somebody's in their late 40s or 50s, they say, this 401(k) is, is like lousy and it's got nothing in it. But you're not doing that. You've got a really good defined contribution plan modeled on a very successful and popular plan. It's been in existence for almost 60 years. And it's the model that you can expand from. And I think it would be attractive to, it would be a choice taken by a lot of people. Not all, but probably by a lot, I would wager.
So how do we get more individuals to take the tests and, and come into Tier Six?
I think that, well, I think there have been more ideas offered today by people more knowledgeable about that than I. There have been talk about waiting times, about inconsistencies in the way tests are administered and, you know, and when and how and fees and all of this, and, and things people can hear from others they know working in government about ridiculous, you know, onboarding times. And, and again, the, the, the pay lag when it comes to the New York State, which is just ridiculous at this point. I think there were a lot of good ideas advanced today that I wouldn't even, I would hesitate to get in front of. It had nothing to do with the pension system, that I think speak to a lot of these obstacles. The thing at the bottom of the end of the day you have to be aware of, and this has always been the case, and you're never going to be completely away from it, is that you, you tend to be in a rigid, a more rigid classification and pay scale system. There's a whole other area to be discussed in terms of how you can make that more flexible. But that's, would take a whole, that, that would be, could be a hearing in itself. It's never going to be as flexible as a private sector company, whether it's publicly owned or privately owned. So that creates, you needed a whole array of strategies for overcoming that disadvantage.
So you also mentioned, I'm sorry, you also mentioned that there was, that Tier Six was a savings for the state. And I'm wondering if you can provide us with a schedule of the actual savings to date?
Well, the savings to date would easily run, I think, into something probably north of $10 billion over the, over the 10 years. Eight to 10, I would think. Perhaps a little less, a little more or less. At the time it was enacted, a kind of misleading number looking to like over the life of the pension fund, it was advertised as like a $35 billion savings by the Cuomo administration. That was really, that was kind of viewing it from a, a perspective that was like, you know, multi-generational.
What was the number you said?
You may recall it, Senator. It was something like $35 billion.
$35 billion?
Yeah. They were saying that it was going to produce this enormous savings. But they meant, this is what it's going to save by like 2050. Okay. But a billion a year, a billion plus, really. That's not pocket change. That's a lot. Undoing Tier Six would be very expensive, not just for the state of New York, but for all the local governments of New York and school districts. And, and again, I don't think it would, it wouldn't accomplish much. I don't, it's just, the, the, you hear the phrase tier equity. Equity based on what? Equity is, equity is defined as it's not as good as Tier Four. Well, that's not, that's not a definition, that's, that's basically, that's an understandable definition of equity if you are employee or a union leader responding to your members who understandably, it's your job, they want more money. But, but equity in terms of equity compared to who? The private sector? No one in the private sector has plans like that anymore. They just don't. And again, one reason for the increase in pension costs, we have new actuarial tables on how long people live these, and they've done the actuarial table update twice in the last 10 years. One of the reasons pension costs have gone up is because pensioners, retirees live so much longer. You've had a class of retirees now retiring, who are retiring in their early 60s. You can't get full Social Security benefits, the current generation, till you're 67. You can't max out your Social Security benefits till you're 70. That's the, the real world, not, and again, police, fire corrections, those are different, that's, there are different arguments to be had and, and points on, on that. But not that I agree with everything that was presented in that, but that's a whole different set. But when it comes to the core of the state workforce, I just, you know, I think that a strong case can be made for, for, there are various improvements you might make in Tier Six, but certainly the first one should be, open the VDC plan to many more employees. And I would say, starting with teachers, because teachers have a well-known and documented attrition rate. A lot of them wash out between five and 10 years. That may be an unkind phrase. Well, like, they move, a spouse moves to another state, they follow the spouse. They have children, they stay home to watch the children. They take a break. There's just, but there's a documented number of teachers who leave before they ever get anything approaching a fair pension compared to what was paid in by them and for them.
Can I just back you up to the equity topic again? Because the, the issue that was brought up today was equity within the workforce. So when you have two individuals working next to each other and they're both at different tiers, how do you create equity between them so that they are working nicely together?
Well, what I'd say is that it's taking, first of all, that, that's an argument against never reforming the pension system or having tiers.
How do you create it so that it, it becomes equal so that...
It's, it's taking care of itself, because each year, there are fewer and fewer people who are in any tier other than Tier Five or Tier Six. If you think Tier Five and, Tier Four and Five, or Tier Three and Four were much more generous, familiarize yourself with Tier One and Two. And there were people in different tiers back in the 70s and early 80s, too, with this, and there were the same sorts of concerns. Or the Legislative ADA Plan, if anybody in this room knows the meaning of that, that's a whole, that's on another planet. Okay? And that was different tiers also. You, if you, you can only reform the pension system in tiers so you don't retroactively affect people who've already vested. That's the old concept. That's what the law requires. So you, if you're going to do anything to change pension benefits and reshape them, you have to do it in tiers. And I can understand what, how that, why that is expressed. But again, to a great extent, it's a problem, it's an issue, if not a problem, that's in the process of taking care of itself. You're going to have increasingly few people in any tier but four or five. It's over half, just over half of all state workers now. It varies by occupation and agency. Within five to 10 years, it's going to be an increasingly small minority. So that's what I would suggest.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Our last panelist is the Workforce Development Institute, WDI. Come on down. McMahon, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I didn't say thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy.
Hello.
You heard that discussion, huh?
Yes, and I'm happy to be here, last panel, right? Bringing up the rear, but always good, so.
Well, welcome.
Yes, thank you very much. You know, thank you Chairman Jackson and Senator Wyke. And I also wanted to recognize the Senate staffers who, you know, do the due diligence, who we work with on a daily basis during budget time. So good to see you all and thank you. My name is Amy DeJardin and I am the Executive Director of the Workforce Development Institute, a statewide nonprofit that works to increase opportunities for all New Yorkers to succeed in the workforce while earning families sustaining wages. I'm joined by my colleague Dan Cullen, who is the Director of Field Services. We work across many sectors and industries, including unions in the building and construction trades, in public and private sector. But we also work with employers in manufacturing and transportation, healthcare, and nonprofits. You have my testimony, so I just would like to highlight a few examples of how we supported our public sector partners in attracting and retaining their workforce relevant to the discussion today. You know, there's a great demand in both the public and private sector for individuals with commercial driver's licenses. And at the same time, several institutions that are providing that training are closing around the state. But yet, the cost of CDL training is rising. And for individuals with CDLs to be competitive with the vast amount of open private sector jobs, you know, such as, you know, for school bus drivers or snowplow drivers, right? You know, they all need CDLs. But to be competitive with the private sector jobs that are just as prevalent, you know, one thing that could be helpful is to have on-the-job training for public sector in, you know, to, to also help with the cost of attaining a CDL, because it's very pricey.
What's the cost?
It's, it's about $5,400 for a person to go through CDL. Some people are trying to do in-house. But there's ways to, you know, potentially do on-the-job training, maybe do some onsite stuff. We're open to collaboration, but those could be major potential recruitment for, you know, new workers who can get a CDL and get right into a job. I also wanted to mention that as school districts transition to the zero emission buses, WDI is continuing to take proactive steps to accelerate the adoption of new technologies in ways that prioritize incumbent workers. Last year, we conducted a workforce needs assessment for EV school bus transition. And one of the main recommendations that emerged from that report is the need for a familiarization training that all workers in that industry would receive even before those buses landed on the lots. So we're developing curriculum and training resources designed to inform and prepare the vast number of drivers, operators, technicians, dispatchers, who deliver students to and from school every day. You know, the training is aimed at demystifying the basics of battery electric school buses through engaging content on topics first and foremost like safety. You know, we all are, you know, high voltage, they're driving these buses. You know, we have to focus on safety for the workforce. We also want to focus on operations and maintenance, how they're maintained, and also just an overall education of the battery electric motor systems. Additionally, we're also helping to remove barriers to employment, like offering childcare solutions to help workers stay in the workforce or help new workers enter. And you heard about the importance of this today from a previous panel from my colleague at the New York State AFL-CIO. The need for affordable, high-quality childcare is one of the most common challenges we hear from our labor partners and their members. And we know that investing in childcare is an investment in the future. And with the recent funding in this year's state budget, WDI was afforded the opportunity to administer its own childcare scholarship program to help cover the high cost of care. The scholarship program expands eligibility for working families not currently, families not covered by existing programs. WDI staff helps facilitate that application process, saving applicants from having to take time away from work to pursue this essential workforce support. I'm happy to report, the program is now live in our nine regions outside of New York City. We just went live this week. It took some time to get the contracts. But we're seeing very much enthusiasm about this program. People want to take advantage of it. For the folks in New York City, there's, there's a similar program being run by the Consortium for Worker Education. And finally, I'd just like to comment that we see forging existing community connections as an essential recruitment tool. WDI can bridge the gap and convene partners to ensure workforce development, CBOs, are aware of the great civil service opportunities available, helping them understand the language of civil service, sometimes it is kind of onerous, learn the career pathways, and prepare the participants with skills needed to succeed. You know, this can start from test preparation for open competitive exams or pre-app deployment training for prerequisites for positions that do not require exams. You know, one thing that WDI, you know, we have experienced, we've done this with the building and construction trades with our pre-apprentice programs. We work with community partners to get them exposed to pre-apprentice, just basic skills that cover all trades. But then it's a catapult into the great apprenticeship programs. But it's not only with the building trades. We've done similar boot camps with manufacturers across the state, software development. And we feel that this could be a useful recruitment tool for public sector careers as well. I just wanted to highlight those three key, you know, components that we talked about for recruitment and retention. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity. And WDI is proud to support the public sector workforce. And we look forward to continuing to work with the legislature to further our shared goals and happy to take your questions.
And thank you for coming in. Obviously, this is very important. One of my, Barbara had, they closed down because of the pandemic and what happened. And he was going to be driving commercial trucks.
Yeah.
I don't, I hadn't seen him after that to, to discuss with him. But you said the average is like $5,400 for how long?
For, for one person.
Yeah, if I could just say.
The traineeship, I mean, you, is it three months, six months, or what?
It can be a few hundred hours for some people, but others who might have experience on prior vehicles might be able to do it sooner than that. $5,400 is about...
And you're Dan, Director of Field Services, right?
Yes, that's right, yes, sir. So the, the average has gone up, as Amy said, into over $5,000 now. There are still some options through both season community colleges in various parts of the state where demand is higher, where it still is lower in the 3,000 to 3,500 range, maybe even a few lower than that. But for someone who's currently unemployed or underemployed, that still is a prohibitive cost to licensing, which is why Amy was recommending, you know, on-the-job training, employer-supported training in some ways is, is probably among the best ways to get that license without incurring that cost. And we've seen that done very successfully by unions that represent public and private sector workers, as well as with private businesses that have hired internal trainers in order to, you know, offset the cost. If you do the math, if it's going to cost you $5,000 per person, but you can, and you, if you do it, you know, for 15 people per year, there's a way to hire a trainer for the right price that, you know, can actually offset that cost.
How long does it take to get that training though, on average?
Yeah, I've seen somewhere between 100 and 160 hours on average, from what I gather. I could be a little bit off on that. I'm sure some people take longer than that. We want them to have as much time as possible, of course, before they're on the roads with us. But yeah, about that.
But we all see those signs of snowplow drivers, right? We know winter's coming, we don't want to talk about it. But snowplow drivers, school bus operators, it's, it's, you know, an essential gap that, you know, potentially we could explore pilot programs with your office or, you know, going down the road.
Amy, you mentioned about, I believe, you got a grant or you, you want a contract regarding the childcare.
Yes.
Outside of New York City because of whatever. But, so people applied and how much were they entitled to receive in this process?
Yeah. So it's a pilot program that was funded in the, through the state legislature and passed in the budget. But there's limited dollars. So the, WDI's program is, we're offering $1,000 for full-time care for children who are newborns to four-year-olds. So if they qualify and have to meet income guidelines, because it's, you can't get a subsidy, you have to go to the county for that. But it's those earning, I think it's up to 400% of the federal poverty level. But, you know, those people are still CSCA workers, school-related personnel, first-year apprentices, that are just struggling and, and trying to figure out, do I go to work? Do I, two-parent household? Or do I stay home? Is it worth it? So this is an essential fix, you know, in this time where we're trying to get more people back in the workforce. And so, you know, like I said, we've, we've been promoting it. We just started it this week. But the, the interest has been phenomenal and we know that it's probably going to go pretty quickly. And I think... And I think that's the idea, right? To make sure that, you know, if, if this small pilot program was a success, and we're running it from Long Island all the way to Buffalo. So I know there's tremendous interest on Long Island as well.
Interesting. So I don't know, how long were you here today, listening to the testimony?
We were, we're right across the street, so we were, we cheated, we watched it online, and then we, and then we came over, but we did catch the last couple panels.
And the reason why I ask that, because whether or not you heard all of the, basically, the testimony, because for me, people were talking about the same issues that impact this union, that union, this organization, and what have you. So it would be good to, to try to come together and come up with the list of things and what we need to do in order to work with the Department of Civil Service and the Commissioner, and hopefully be able to get the governor and everyone on board on this to, to move forward in the direction of, of dealing with the timeframe in order to apply and get a job without, she's saying, what, eight months? Forget about it, I'm not waiting for eight months, I need a job now. They need a job now, they need to work, you know?
And what's great is, WDI was born out of the labor movement, and our partners were all presented earlier today. So we are in constant contact, and so we can, you know, formulate a plan, and, you know, we come in at a workforce development, they come in at, with, you know, their fixes internally under the collective bargaining agreement. So it's a nice partnership, and we'll certainly work together to find solutions going forward.
How long have WDI been alive and well?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
I just took over for two years, so, but I used to work for the AFL-CIO, full disclosure.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Senator?
Well, it's a great program, and I appreciate all the work that you do on it. And of course, I come from Suffolk County, which is home to the largest number of veterans. So my concern is really, I'm just curious what role you have in transitioning veterans with military skills to comparable civilian jobs. I know CDL's a big one. So do you have a role in that, in making sure that they have job placement?
Not really a direct role necessarily. I mean, we support some organizations, especially in the building trades and other unions, that absolutely, it's a high priority of theirs. We work with a pre-apprentice program out of New York City, helmets to hardass.
Helmets to hardass was mentioned earlier.
Dan, is your mic on, Dan?
Oh, is it not, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was, I was saying, in our work with the building and construction trades, you know, a lot of them have targeted programming to support veterans. And, including, of course, helmets to hardass, which was mentioned earlier today, as, as we all know. Absolutely, the skill sets that people come out of the military with are, you know, so important in the manufacturing world that we work in as well. We know they're very highly valued by manufacturers and semiconductor and other, you know, technology. So certainly, we, we would support anything that we could do to help make people, people's skills translate more clearly, because that is one of the major problems, is talking about the very complex systems you may have worked on in the United States Navy. You've worked on the most, you know, advanced technology in the world, but it doesn't have the same exact terminology as something that another employer is. So we would absolutely support pilot programs to help people kind of bridge those gaps, the way we've done other industries.
And we're also, we wear another hat, we work with Cornell I L R in the Cannabis Workforce Initiative, and one of those veterans is front and center in a group that, you know, trying to get licenses and get into that world as well. But we're making those connections with veterans groups, so it's a natural conduit, it's not just cannabis, right? We can open doors to civil services as well. Good. And I just, you know, like, the best way to increase someone's ability to earn a living, or a better living, is a training program that's available to increase the employee's value and enhancing their skill set. And I see that so often with, you know, even manufacturers who are coming into our school districts and helping students from that point forward. But to that end, New York has a lot of training programs. And to what extent is the coordination of programs offered by BOCs and Community College in the ninety-one one-stop centers in New York State? The Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act, and the other programs offered by the state agencies that are coordinated? So what do you have to offer on, in that field?
Partnerships, yeah. I mean, so we're, we're not a, we owe a funded organization, we're a state-funded organization, but we work very closely with the WIBs around New York State. Actually, our staff sit on many of them around the state, so that our services, you know, play well with others. Our funding is not federal, so therefore, there's many cases where our staff are able to meet with businesses and employers and help them understand what we can offer is maybe different and may dovetail nicely with what federal funds are available. So as Amy talked about, on-the-job training earlier, which is administered by the Department of Labor and by the WIBs, very often, we've been able to support programs around that. So maybe it's, it's training for the people who are actually going to be delivering the training. So maybe it's a management training program, or it could be, you know, assistance with very specific technical skills. You know, we don't provide the training, but we help try to remove some of the barriers so that people can get that training, which sometimes includes grant funding, sometimes it includes helping them find training partners from BOCs and from the community colleges. You know, our network of partners is well over a thousand that we interact with on an annual basis for our ten regional staff around the state, and always growing. So, you know, it's always nice when we can bring multiple people to the table at the same time and say, you know, we can help with this part of the problem, we have a partner who can help with that part of the problem. So I think they would also say the same, that they find ways for WDI to fill gaps that they don't, can't otherwise fill themselves.
That's great, thank you. And we appreciate the ability to bring those people with their jobs together, and thank you for what you do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in. We appreciate you, even though, last but not least.
Absolutely, thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you.
And for writing us.
It's been a good day, we heard a lot of good testimony, and it's a way to close it out. Thank you very much. So let me thank all of the staff, the Sergeant Aron, and other staff.
Thank you.
That puts us together, thank you. I enjoyed it. Yeah, it's a lot of information, so we're going to pull it together and hopefully improve the outcomes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, thank you, Joanna. Thank you, good night, everyone.